All right, everybody, welcome to tonight's City Council Budget Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the 21st. So we've just come from in camera that we've been conducting since 2:00 P. M., and we're going to start the official agenda. So for the first item, item 2.1, in camera resolution, we're going to go to our clerk to explain next steps.
Yeah, so just some further explanation, the in camera session that was held earlier this afternoon, that resolution to go in camera was passed at the December 10th council meeting, and that was for an education session regarding the official plan. The in camera resolution on today's agenda was prepared in advance in case council needed to go back in camera for an education session regarding the operating budget. I realize that that is not necessary today, and the other matter that was a personal matter, I will bring up under Communications of the City Clerk, and we'll just discuss that in an open session today. So all that being said, there is no reason to pass the in camera resolution on today's open session agenda.
Okay. Any questions of the clerk? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes from our January 13, 2025 meeting, looking for a motion to adopt the minutes, motion by Councillor Strange, second by Councillor Peter Angelo.
Well, it's the minutes. Yeah, it wasn't here.
Well, he can't move the, can he move the minutes, Mr. Better he doesn't?
It wasn't here.
Okay.
But I did want to speak to him.
Okay, so why don't we first get it on the floor with Councillor Baldinelli, and before we call the vote, you want to speak to them, Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I just have a conflict to declare from last meeting, CAO 2025-01 and its corresponding bylaw 2025-009, I own property that can be affected. So I'll pass it over to the clerk.
Got that, so note of pecuniary interest, thank you for that, Councillor Peter Angelo, and if there's nothing further, we'll call the vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. Moving on to, speaking of disclosures of a pecuniary interest, do we have any disclosures? Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict on 5.4, the boards and commissions, which is also part of the bigger budget. I do sit on the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, which is for a fee for service for $28,000. Obviously, I'll be speaking to the rest of the budget, but I won't be speaking to that one.
Okay, thank you.
And I have forwarded it to the clerk.
And you forwarded in writing to the clerk, so we're good to go on that, thank you. And Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, for this meeting, CS 2025-02, attachment six. My parents live on one of the rural road segments that's being identified for resurfacing, and I'll pass that over to the clerk.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to reports. So first up, we've got 5.1, CS 2025-07, 2025 Budget Engagement Survey Results. So I'll go to our Director of Finance to maybe give us a quick overview on what that is and what you expect from us.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a receipt for information. We've been doing the budget engagement survey now for a few years, so Dale Morton, our communications director, was actually kind enough to put all three years of data in the attachments, so you've got a bit of a comparison. And I would just kind of say it's not really a scientific survey, we did only receive 1,000 responses, but it's still helpful to kind of get the feel for what's out there in the public. And the one major thing I'll say is the one consistent area, everybody wants to increase service and roads.
Roads.
That's kind of the main theme of the survey every year, so this is just a receipt for information, and that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, that's great. Any questions, first of all, of the report, of the survey, rather? Yes, Councillor Patel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through Ms. Clark. Did we ask for address? Do we know everybody who participated in the survey is Niagara Falls resident?
I ask Ms. Morton?
Through the chair, yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councillor Newestag?
I just want to add a comment to what Ms. Clark said in terms of where people are looking at in terms of roads and everything. One thing I did notice is the increase in, or decrease where people are saying no tax increase, we started in 2023 looking at 32%, it's down to 27%. So I think people are realizing that there has to be some sort of a tax increase, so I found that very interesting. And also, and it's comparable to the maintenance, want to just maintain as opposed to maintain increase, so you'll see that those numbers are indicative of the sentiment of where people are. So I did pay attention to this when I was studying the budget because I thought that was really important. And the other keynote is the increase to what people expected to be relative to rate of inflation, where in 2023, 15% of the people responded said that they want to keep rate of inflation, and in 2025, you see a significant jump to 23.2%. So I found that an interesting thing to note.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments? Councillor Dobrowski?
No, it's a question through you to Ms. Morton, and I see the percentages, but is there an actual number for the amount of people that responded?
Ms. Morton, participants?
Through the chair. So for each question?
Or just like in total, like I know you're offering multiple years, but is there like a sample size, was it 100 residents? And it might be in here, and I might have missed it.
So this year, yeah, the response for 1,007, or six persons that responded?
Oh, wow. That's a great, that's great feedback. Good to hear, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, we look for a motion to receive. Councillor Newestag, second by Councillor Strange, all those in favor, okay, and that's unanimously received, thank you for that. Then we go to 5.2, this is a staff proposed 2025 tax levy supported budget variance analysis. There's recommendation that we receive the analysis for information. Looking for a motion to receive this, Councillor Newestag, looking for a seconder to receive, Councillor Baldinelli, there's no discussions, we'll call that vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's approved too, so we're good to go. And, yeah, and there was two parts to that. The first part was to receive, the second part was to approve the budget reclassifications that were identified. So is the mover, I just want to make sure I was clear that that was part of, I know it was in your recommendations, but as long as everybody's clear, full disclosure to the mover and the seconder, so we're okay with that? Okay, we're good, we're good to go, thank you for that, Ms. Clark. So moving on to 5.3, the presentation of the operating budgets. We're going to go to Ms. Clark, our Director of Finance, she's going to walk us through this, so the floor is yours. No pressure, take your time. And when we do, we will have two, it looks like two people that want to speak, Mr. Clerk, I see on the list at some point.
The second one is just available for questions.
Oh, I see, okay, so one, got it. So we'll draw everyone's attentions to the screen, so one woman show here, she's running the PowerPoint and going to be doing the presentation.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to present your budget, the 2025 tax levy supported budget. This is, of course, in line with the budget guidance, so in August, we asked for some budget guidance from council, turns out August wasn't a really good time to ask for it because many councils were absent, and I kind of thought it was important to draw attention to that, just to kind of point out it wasn't really everybody's opinion involved in that. Nonetheless, the direction was to prepare options ranging from 3% to a four and a half percent operating increase, as well as a 1% capital levy increase. In September, the mayor gave us a directive to, for the CAO and the treasurer, to prepare the draft tax levy budget, keep the mayor updated, as well as provide the draft budget to council and the public in January. This is just a slide showing our levy budget dates, just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but just to show how much effort that staff put into this. So we start the process in July, for the next three, four months, departments are planning their budget, inputting their budget, we're having meetings discussing the changes, any new initiatives, and then for the month of December, finance is kind of pulling it all together, and then January 3rd, staff release the budget book with council, that was a Friday, and then on the Mondays, we were able to release the media budget as well as the report that you just passed, the staff variance analysis, so that was the staff proposed budget, not the mayor's proposed budget. But I will note, the mayor's proposed budget basically layers onto the staff budget, staff prepare theirs, the mayor looks at it and decides what he may or may not want to change. So councils and the public have had this budget since January 6, the staff budget, and then council went into education session on the 13th, and the mayor's budget was then released on the 15th. And here we are today, ready to approve it. In terms of our budget overview, so that first budget that staff released, that was a 7.6% operating increase and a 1% capital increase. We revised the budget, staff found some corrections, revised it down to 7.1% plus a 1%, and then the mayor got his hands on it, and he's proposing 4.5% operating and 1% capital. So that's kind of where we're at today, and
That we've been conducting since 2:00 P. M. And we're going to start the official agenda. So for the first item, item 2.1, in-camera resolution, we're going to go to our clerk to explain next steps.
Yeah, so just some further explanation. The in-camera session that was held earlier this afternoon, that resolution to go in camera was passed at the December 10th council meeting, and that was for an education session regarding the official plan. The in-camera resolution on today's agenda was prepared in advance in case council needed to go back in camera for an education session regarding the operating budget. I realized that that is not necessary today, and the other matter that was a personal matter, I will bring up under communications of the city clerk, and we will just discuss that in an open session today. So all that being said, there is no reason to pass the in-camera resolution on today's open session agenda.
Okay. Any questions of the clerk? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes from our January 13th, 2025 meeting. Looking for a motion to adopt the minutes. Motion by Councilor Strange, second by Councilor Peter Angelo.
Well, it's the minutes. Yeah, it wasn't here.
Well, he can't move the, can he move the minutes, Mr. Better he doesn't?
It wasn't here.
Okay.
But I did want to speak to him.
Okay, so why don't we first get it on the floor with Councilor Baldinelli? And before we call the vote, you want to speak to them, Councilor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I just have a conflict to declare from last meeting, CAO 2025-01 and its corresponding bylaw 2025-009, I own property that can be affected. So I'll pass it over to the clerk.
Got that. So note of pecuniary interest, thank you for that, Councilor Peter Angelo. And if there's nothing further, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. Moving on to, speaking of disclosures of a pecuniary interest, do we have any disclosures? Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict on 5.4, the boards and commissions, which is also part of the bigger budget. I do sit on the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, which is for a fee for service for $28,000. Obviously, I'll be speaking to the rest of the budget, but I won't be speaking to that one.
Okay, thank you.
And I have forwarded it to the clerk.
And you forwarded in writing to the clerk, so we're good to go on that. Thank you. And Councilor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. For this meeting, CS 2025-02, attachment 6, my parents live on one of the rural road segments that's being identified for resurfacing. And I'll pass that over to the clerk.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to reports. So first up, we've got 5.1, CS 2025-07, 2025 Budget Engagement Survey Results. So I'll go to our Director of Finance to maybe give us a quick overview on what that is and what you expect from us.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a receipt for information. We've been doing the budget engagement survey now for a few years, so Dale Morton, our communications director, was actually kind enough to put all three years of data in the attachments. You've got a bit of a comparison. And I would just kind of say it's not really a scientific survey. We did only receive 1,000 responses, but it's still helpful to kind of get a feel for what's out there in the public. And the one major thing I'll say is the one consistent area, everybody wants to increase service in roads.
Roads.
That's kind of the main theme of the survey every year. So this is just a receipt for information, and that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, that's great. Any questions, first of all, of the report, of the survey, rather? Yes, Counselor Patel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through Ms. Clark. Did we ask for address? Do we know everybody who participated in the survey is Niagara Falls resident?
I ask Ms. Morton?
Through the chair, yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Newsteg.
I just want to add a comment to what Ms. Clark said in terms of where people are looking at in terms of roads and everything. One thing I did notice is the increase in, or decrease, where people are saying no tax increase. We started in 2023, looking at 32%. It's down to 27%. So I think people are realizing that there has to be some sort of a tax increase. So I found that very interesting. And also, and it's comparable to the maintenance, want to just maintain as opposed to maintain increase. So you'll see that those numbers are indicative of the sentiment of where people are. So I did pay attention to this when I was studying the budget because I thought that was really important. And the other keynote is the increase to what people expected to be relative to rate of inflation. Where in 2023, 15% of the people responded said that they want to keep rate of inflation, and in 2025, you see a significant jump to 23.2%. So I found that an interesting thing to note.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments? Counselor Dobrosky.
No, it's a question through you to Ms. Morton. And I see the percentages, but is there an actual number for the amount of people that responded?
Ms. Morton, participants?
Through the chair. So for each question?
Or just like in total, like I know you're offering multiple years, but is there like a sample size? Was it 100 residents? And it might be in here, and I might have missed it.
So this year, yeah, the response for 1,007,600 or 6,000.
Oh, wow.
That's a great, that's great feedback.
Good to hear. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, we look for a motion to receive. Counselor Newsteg, second by Counselor Strange, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimously received. Thank you for that. Then we go to 5.2. This is a staff-proposed 2025 tax levy-supported budget variance analysis. There's recommendation that we receive the analysis for information. Looking for a motion to receive this, Counselor Newsteg, looking for a seconder to receive, Counselor Baldinelli. There's no discussions, we'll call that vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's approved too, so we're good to go. And, yeah, and there was two parts to that. The first part was to receive, the second part was to approve the budget reclassifications that were identified. So is the mover, I just want to make sure I was clear that that was part of, I know it was in your recommendations, but as long as everybody's clear, full disclosure to the mover and the seconder, so we're okay with that? Okay, we're good. We're good to go. Thank you for that, Ms. Clark. So moving on to 5.3, the presentation of the operating budgets. We're going to go to Ms. Clark, our Director of Finance, she's going to walk us through this. So the floor is yours. No pressure, take your time. And when we do, we will have two, it looks like two people that want to speak. Mr. Clerk, I see on the list at some point.
And the second one is just available for questions.
Oh, I see, okay. So one. Got it. So we'll draw everyone's attentions to the screens. One woman show here, she's running the PowerPoint and going to be doing the presentation.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to present your budget, the 2025 tax levy-supported budget. This is, of course, in line with the budget guidance. So in August, we asked for some budget guidance from council. Turns out, August wasn't a really good time to ask for it because many councils were absent, and I kind of thought it was important to draw attention to that, just to kind of point out, it wasn't really everybody's opinion involved in that. Nonetheless, the direction was to prepare options ranging from 3% to a 4.5% operating increase, as well as a 1% capital levy increase. In September, the mayor gave us a directive to, for the CAO and the treasurer, to prepare the draft tax levy budget, keep the mayor updated, as well as provide the draft budget to council and the public in January. This is just a slide showing our levy budget dates. Just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but just to show how much effort that staff put into this. So we start the process in July. For the next three, four months, departments are planning their budget, inputting their budget. We're having meetings discussing the changes, any new initiatives. And then for the month of December, finance is kind of pulling it all together. And then January 3rd, staff released the budget book with council, that was a Friday. And then on the Mondays, we were able to release the media budget, as well as the report that you just passed, the staff variance analysis. So that was the staff-proposed budget, not the mayor's proposed budget. But I will note, the mayor's proposed budget basically layers onto the staff budget. Staff prepare theirs, the mayor looks at it and decides what he may or may not want to change. So councils and the public have had this budget since January 6th, the staff budget. And then council went into education session on the 13th, and the mayor's budget was then released on the 15th. And here we are today, ready to approve it. In terms of our budget overview, so that first budget that staff released, that was a 7.6% operating increase and a 1% capital increase. We revised the budget, staff found some corrections, revised it down to 7.1% plus a 1%, and then the mayor got his hands on it, and he's proposing 4.5% operating and 1% capital. So that's kind of where we're at today, and we're going to talk about that 4.5% and that 1%. Terms of a quick overview, so part of that 4.5% actually includes some of the council-deferred items from last year. So last year, council deferred the remaining 5% of the fleet replacement increase, which was about $81,000. And they actually deferred 100% of the 2024 increase, which I think was around $686,000. Staff are proposing to include the rest of that 23 carryover to get that off the plate, and we're only adding in 5% of the 24 increase, so, actually, sorry, that was the mayor's suggestion. We're still going to defer 95% of the 24 increase in fleet, and we'll get to that later. And then in terms of the departmental increases for 2025, we're looking at about a $4 million increase, or just 4.4%. That would be net of any growth or revenue increases as well. Just a quick slide on our capital levies. So we are proposing a capital levy increase of 1%. I would say it's long overdue. In the last, I don't know, eight, nine years, we've only added basically a half percent, $400,000 to capital. We have a 1.5% levy currently, and we're looking at adding about $910,000. That would give us about a 2.5% capital levy. You may remember from last year, we had asked for a 1.5% hospital levy with the idea that this would replenish our reserves. We are dropping $30 million out of our reserves in, I think it's around 2027, 2028, to pay for the cap, hospital contribution. So we did want to make sure to spread that impact out across generations, and that's kind of the logic between adding that. So the mayor's kind of agreed to throw 1% in this year, that's the recommendation, and the idea would be to add the other half percent into next year's budget. Oh, and I should mention, sorry, that capital levy, the idea, the mayor's indicated that it should be spent on roads, and our general manager, Municipal Works, did propose a project. It is attached, I can't remember if it's attachment six or five, but it is attached in a report later on on the agenda with a recommendation to increase rural road surface treatment program by $900,000. So that would be, if we approve that today, we would go ahead and amend the capital budget, and they could get going with their tender on that project. Looking at the highlights, so we already talked about the deferred items. The CPI for 2024 was 3.9%. I've included in the bottom the previous CPI increases. So if you were just going to have an inflationary budget alone, you would end up around the 3.9%. We do have some other kind of increases that are contributing to why we're higher than the 3.9%. So the mayor's landed at the 4.5%. And some of those major increases are cybersecurity and software. So we're really investing hard in our cybersecurity programs, I guess you call them, and software as a service. So something to note about that, where software used to be an on-premises solution, those would be much cheaper annual operating costs, but much heavier on the capital side to implement. And now that we're getting to software that's in the cloud, they're much cheaper on the capital side to implement, but they come with heftier annual fees, and that is certainly impacting our increase in our operating budget. And then the last one, we're going to focus quite a bit on this in the next few slides. There is a service level increase proposed, specifically new staffing, and a large chunk of that's around city cleanup, and that would be with the municipal enforcement positions, which were actually approved in the capital, or sorry, the parking budget. And then we've got several new teams proposed in Municipal Works. And the idea is that they would help address the overall appearance and cleanliness of the city, especially in areas, you know, that have kind of been hit a little heavier with the homelessness and mental health and addiction issues. Oh, I've sort of already, I've already kind of covered this, so I'm not going to cover it again, but there's a little bit more information there on the software as a service and the cybersecurity. And then moving into our city cleanup slides, so we wanted to just kind of draw a few pictures to your attention of some of the cleanups that we've had to attend, and these are certainly hard to look at, but it gives you kind of an appreciation. If our staff have to be pulled off of their job for the day of whatever they're working on, say, cutting the grass, or, I don't know, fixing something, to do this cleanup, that's work they're not getting to on the city side. And we're noticing an impact in that in our, in our service level. So that's why we're proposing these new crews that I'm going to talk about in a little bit, but it's kind of to handle some of these larger cleanups that are happening in the city that we really can't ignore, we have to address them. So we talked about the municipal enforcement. We did already approve three new full-time positions. They were funded 25% by the parking budget, and they're funded 75% by the tax levy budget. Those were the municipal enforcement supervisor and the two junior municipal enforcement officers. There is some offsetting revenues against that, so we did remove, we had a contract municipal officer position, so that's been removed to make space for the full-time junior position. And we're also adding in $80,000 of funding from our municipal accommodation tax. And I know we had quite a lengthy discussion on that at the last meeting in terms of the new initiatives, so that's, that's one of them, would be some funding to offset our municipal enforcement costs, specifically around the tourist area. So net of that funding, the new bylaw positions are having a $51,000 impact on the levy budget. This little video. So we just kind of wanted to show, this was a resident video, and it kind of spoke to us in terms of the amount of cleanup that we have to do, and you can read the resident's comments for yourself, but it's clear we have to do something. We've got our new bylaw positions, and we're proposing several new positions in Municipal Works. In total, it results in 476 weeks of increased service, by multiple people, of course. So what are we asking for? We would like to extend three seasonal labors from 30 weeks to 52 weeks, so that's an increase of 66 weeks. We'd like to extend 33 seasonal labors from 30 weeks to 35 weeks. Now, this one's not just city cleanup, this is a little bit of the environment changing, so where we used to maybe not be cutting grass in November, it's now, it's now warm still, and we are still having to cut grass and everything. So this is kind of to reflect the amount of work that's out there today, and certainly Eric and his team can speak more intelligently about exactly what those workloads are. We have a rapid response team that we want. This would be three individuals that work 35 hours, or sorry, 35 weeks a year, and then a maintenance beat crew, same thing, but four individuals, they would work for 35 weeks out of the year. So that's the amount of increased service we're talking about, specifically kind of in the Municipal Works operation area related to cleanup and kind of responding to more immediate requests, I guess you could say. Offsetting some of those costs, we are using $300,000 of funding from the municipal accommodation tax. So those four items, net of that funding, it's resulted in about a $385,000 impact to the levy budget. Just a high-level summary of where the budget's at, so revenues increased by about 3.9 million, and costs have increased by about 8 million. Clearly, that's not balanced, hence the teeter-totter. This is how we result in the net levy increase for the operating side of 4.1%, which is about a 4.5% increase. And I know it's quite small there, but I've kind of summed it up. On the revenue side, we had growth of 1.5 million. We have the increased penalty revenue, and increased mat revenue, it totals about 1.1 million. And then we've got increased user fees and investment income, adding about another 1.3 million. And then on the cost side, labor, of course, is our biggest cost, so we have our contractual labor and benefit increases, about 3.4 million, and our new positions and labor benefit increases are 2.3 million. Then, of course, I mentioned software, that's really our next biggest driver, and that's 1.2 million dollar increase. And then the remainder would just be inflationary increases and other expenses, they total 1.1 million. But of course, just like in your household, our utilities go up, ours went up 151,000, or I think it was 3% or 4%. So we have inflationary costs, just like everybody else. Just a couple slides on the OLG, because just why not? We get a lot of questions about the OLG funds, some confusion about where they're going, what are the priorities, how do they work? So I thought I would kind of remind not only council but the public what, what we're doing with those. So there, of course, there's the five adopted areas, that's property tax relief, capital asset and strategic initiatives, economic development initiatives, what's now social service initiatives, which was previously dedicated to the hospital, and then, of course, 18% of our OLG funds go to the Niagara Regional Police Casino District Unit. Something to note about the agreement, and something that staff constantly reminds council and the public, this agreement can be terminated with 30 days' notice. I don't know how realistic that is, but it is in there, and it could happen, and that's why this, this staff has worked hard to try to reduce the property tax relief of the OLG fund, and instead focus it on capital. Because our fear would be that one day it goes away, and all of a sudden, you've got a 10% increase to make up. So right now, in this budget, the proposed tax subsidy is $5 million. Last year, it was $5,090,000, so we've reduced it just a hair by $90,000. If that was to go away, let's say next year, there's no OLG funds, we'd have a 5.5% levy increase just to make up for that piece. So that's a big risk. That's a keep-me-awake night at moment. I don't like the OLG money in the levy budget, but I realize there's a, there's a happy medium to be had, and that's where the next slide comes in. So I just did include our previous tax subsidies. We've made some progress. You can see from 2014 to 2020, we had almost 6 million in, which would be a larger impact, and now we're down in this budget proposing 5 million. So we are making some steps in the right direction. Some of this council may remember way back when, before 2014, we were only receiving 3 million from the casino, and that entire 3 million was in the levy. So I kind of put it there on the right there. Staff previously asked council to kind of adopt a strategy of reducing the OLG subsidy by 50% of the growth, and we did that for a couple of years, and then we stopped doing it last year because we wanted to get the increase down. I was talking with the CAO, and we kind of have an alternative proposal. I think we can live with 3 million remaining in the levy budget as a tax subsidy, but we'd really like to see that 5 million wean down further, and it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, we can spread that out over four years, eight years, whatever. I can live with 3 million in the budget because the risk decreases, right? If we leave 3 million in today, that's a 3.3% levy increase. As our levy grows over time, that percent and that risk drops. So I would be happy with, with that proposal, I can live with that risk. So that's kind of our new proposal, just kind of noting that we keep not doing the 50% growth, so we need a different plan. Now, just a few slides on market value versus assessed value. This seems to be a kind of a hot topic. We, you know, we talk about our average household of 280,000, and people think we're crazy, but your assessed value is not your market value. Your market value is what your house would sell for today on an open market for a willing buyer, whereas your assessed value is assigned by MPAC, and actually, it's supposed to be what your house would sell for on the market as of January 1st, 2016. But MPAC hasn't done a reassessment year in, in over eight years, and these are still 2016 amounts. So sure, does it sound ridiculous that you could get a house for 280,000? Yes. But being mindful that this is an assessment value based on eight, nine years ago data, hopefully we can keep that in mind. And staff have actually taken that a step further this time to kind of hopefully put that criticism to bed, to show in our assessment base, we have 31,000 residential dwellings. And if you look, these are their assessment values. So over, almost 64% are assessed at $280,000 and lower. So when we tell you that's the average household, that makes up 64% of the residential dwellings. In fact, 22% are actually 180,000 and lower. And now, we still did include our $500,000 assessed home example for you in, in the slideshow, but we really want to focus more on that 280,000 because it is really more representative of our tax base, right? Over 86% are 400,000 and lower, and only 5.4% of the residential dwellings are 1,600 houses or, are over 500,000. So we thought this was kind of an important slide to hopefully bring some clarity to that $280,000 assessed value. So we do have our three examples. We have the $100,000 example, I think this was a request of Counselor LaCoco a few years ago, with the idea being that if you know your assessed value, you kind of multiply the 100 by whatever yours is. So this shows if you had a $100,000 assessed home, in total, with your operating increase and your capital increase, you'd be going up $32 for the year, or $2.70 for a month. If you're the average household at the 280,000, reminding everybody that this is 64% of our residential base, you're going up about $7.56 a month, or $91 for the year. And then looking at our $500,000 assessed home, you would be going up about $162 for the year, or $1,350 a month. And these pictures, I'm sorry, on these slides, we did see them last year, but these are actual homes in, in our city that are assessed at these values. Do you have a question?
Counselor Newsteg.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. From Ms. Clark. I find, you've mentioned this a few times, and you started this two years ago, about the percentage and impact. And one thing I really appreciate with, when you're talking about the taxes, is you, you've brought it down in saying, what is the actual impact to the, to the dollar? So you've made it, and I'm going to repeat after you, because you are the one, this is your discussion. You've said, it doesn't matter, we can talk percentages, but what does that really mean at the end of the day? And you net it down to, what does it really mean to the average household? Two years ago, it was this $8, and I've heard many, many people not understand it and criticize about it because they didn't really understand. So I'm going to ask if, we can slow it down for a minute to, so, for example, if we were to get back to an inflationary budget, that 3.9%, what would that equal to? And you mentioned 68% of the households. So 68% equals 2/3 of our whole population. So I want to slow it so people understand 2/3, the real value, because they didn't understand this assessed value. So as it is right now, forget about what values of homes are. We know that 2/3, based on all of this, to simplify, 2/3 of our homes are assessed at $280,000 less. So 2/3 of the population, should we increase, should we put an inflationary budget together, 3.9%, what is that impact on the, on 2/3 of our residents for a tax levy? I don't know if you have your numbers.
Ms. Clark?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Can I get that for you at the end of this? I just don't have it open right now.
Sure. Okay, but if you can, I'd really like you to come back and, and just explain it. And again, this does not mean what the region, so we got criticized again because people got very confused, they thought, well, that's the region as well, and what we were talking about was not accurate, but it really is accurate. So I really want to take the time to help those that can't understand, to see and understand what this really means, because I really like your approach. I know you're highly educated, you have a lot of degrees in finance and, and accounting that you can really speak to it. So if we can just make the resident understand what that net impact is for them, I think that might go a long way for them to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you had a 3.9% operating increase, and you still kept the 1% capital levy increase, the $280,000 assessed home would go up $81 annually, or $672 a month?
So just the 3.9 point, the tax levy, if we can even break it down further between tax, the levy and the capital, I know at the end of the day, it's $6 and, what did you say, $6.74?
$6.72.
72 cents.
I'm sorry, did you say just don't include the capital levy?
No, break it both down, if we, if you have it for both.
Yeah, so it'd be $5.34 on the operating side increase, and then the difference would be the, the capital levy.
Okay, thank you.
Be $1.41 on the capital levy.
Okay, and together, it's $6.70.
672, yeah.
672, thank you.
It came to 675.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Rounding error. So I think we covered our $500,000 assessed home. This is just a little breakdown of your 2024 tax bill compared to your 2025 tax bills. So again, this is assuming the 4.5% operating increase, as well as the 1% capital increase. So you can see in 2024, now this is including the region and educate, and the education rate, so full tax bill, you would have paid $4,400 a year in taxes. They would be going up by $275 here, and, or $22, $23 a month. And then your total taxes for 2025 would be $4,679. To note, though, we'll get to this on the next slide, so of that increase, and you can see it broken down, the city's responsible for, oh, so $7, it should be $7.56, and then the region's responsible for $15.47 monthly. So the city's increase is, is about 1/3, and the region's increase is about 2/3. The regions went up twice as much as the city. The regions went up twice as much as the city. So just want to, we take we take some heat on on that because we do the billing.
Well, and I just want to point that out to council and I'm sure everyone's aware that the city collects for the region and the school board. But we get the heat sometimes for them because we collect for them. We're a flow-through agency. We just pass the money along. But unfortunately, when they have a sizable increase and we're collecting it, the people call us typically. And that's what happened last year and I'm sure that might be what happens again this year. We're going to get a lot of calls. So it's good that that last slide, if we can keep that on the screen for a second, you should have that handy when you're explaining, because most people, I don't think, fully understand how the breakdown is. So two takeaways, $280,000 is the average of evaluated home and that's how they're taxed on, 280. And that represents 2/3 of all houses. That's number one. Because people say, my house is worth a lot more than that. Not through MPAC, it's not. And the second thing takeaway is that, as you can see here, 2/3 of the money go to the region, the school board, and we collect for everyone. So just so everyone's aware, we're the collection agency. Yes, Counselor Newsted?
And one more point to that, we have no control over what the region's budget is. So we are not voting on it. We have nothing. The only thing we can vote on is our tax levy here and capital. So just when people are upset with us, we we don't control the region. That's your regional councilor's.
Or the transit.
Or transit or police budget. That's not us. That's, like you said, we collect, but we are not voting on it.
Right, we just collect for everybody. Thank you for that. I'm sorry, carry on.
Okay, so this just looks at where we are in the region. So this is comparing your tax. If you had a $280,000 assessed home in each of the area municipalities, what would your taxes be? To be clear, though, the $280,000 is our average assessed home. It's not everybody else's. Niagara-on-the-Lake, for example, is closer to 500,000. Port Colbrun's closer to 200,000. So this is just more apples to apples. If you had a $280,000 house, we would fall there in in the number seven spot. Looking at it a different way, though, if we did take everybody's average households in the various municipalities, and we haven't included them all, we've just done a summary. So the average in the region then, your current value assessment would be the seven, sorry, the $333,000 assessed value. And the city portion of your tax bill would be almost $2,000 there, the 1963. Now, in Niagara Falls, the average, we've rounded to 280, but it's 283,758. And your city bill would be $1,680. The highest tax in the region, and I'm not going to name names on which municipality, is at $2,600, whereas the lowest is 1,500. It's interesting to note that the city of Niagara Falls is actually the second lowest. We are just right above that lowest tax. So if you're taking everybody's average value, we are we are near the bottom, almost at the bottom.
Can you say that one more time? I don't think everybody heard you.
Sorry.
I want to make sure in the back heard that too. Go ahead, say that again, please.
If you take all the local municipalities' current value assessment, their average households, city of Niagara Falls is second from the bottom. We are not the lowest, but we are the second lowest.
You're right, exactly right. Second from, second lowest. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. And that's the end.
Good, excellent. Yes, Counselor Strange, Counselor Newsted.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to that point about where the the rest of kind of cities in our region, maybe even outside the region, I'm doing a little bit of homework on on some of the municipalities who have released their tax levy. And first of all, I'm surprised you're wearing green today.
We're red.
Yeah, should have been red. Money, money for green or?
Oh, yeah, I think so. That's what you're doing.
Anyway, so you're looking, and I've done my homework. So Lincoln is at 7.87%. Pelham, 4.84. Port Colbrun is 6.5, 6.45. We have Wayne Fleet at 5.66. Wellen is at 3.95. London, a little bit outside our region, 7.3. 5.82 Burlington-Halt, and then Mississauga's 8.8. And Toronto, and obviously the region is skyrocket at 9.6%, which obviously, like Counselor Newsted, we can't do anything about. But I think, I like the idea where Counselor Newsted was going, mentioning the the kind of rate of inflation. I'd like to kind of get to that point if possible. And I know there's some amendments that we're looking at today and I know staff and the mayor and all finance have been working hard. And we've been in meetings all the last few weeks, in camera, discussing what we can do, what we can cut, what we can't cut. You know, we've done a done a lot and we've hired, we know we've had to hire some employees, you know, with bylaw, we've had to hire some fire, we had to upgrade our computer system. So we we know that we had a lot of work and staff have done a lot of work to cut stuff. So hopefully we can shave a little bit more today to get down to hopefully near that inflation rate. But I would just wanted to just talk about where some of the other municipalities are at around our region, just outside our region significantly higher.
Yeah, and I think it's consistent. And I'm going to work my way around. We do have one more slide I want to present and then we'll go more to questions and comments. And you're exactly right. I mean, you heard the Director of Finance, we're the second lowest in the region when you look at assessed value. I think we're doing pretty good. And and yet, our service levels is is very good. So it's a combination, right? I mean, you can cut and then give up services or you can go high and have lots of service. We've got a bit of both. I think we we get the best of both worlds, right? We have great services and we have lower property taxes. So what I just want to point out, so everybody sent in suggestions from city council to our finance staff with ideas on how we could bring it down. Because we gave guidance to our staff of 3.9 to 4.5. That was the guidance we gave them when they were going to create this budget. So we've got it down to 4.5 and you guys were very diligent, saying, you know, we've got to go farther, it's not enough, we've got to lower, people are hurting right now. So you sent in your ideas. So what we did was, we sat down with our our finance staff and our CAO, and we do have one more slide we want to present, and this is reflective of your comments. We tried to integrate, some of your ideas overlapped because somebody had the same idea about certain things. So rather than put, you know, specific names to the ideas, we integrated them into an updated operating budget. And and I'm going to ask our our Director of Finance, if she'll walk us through this slide. And just to be clear, it's reflective of what you sent into the portals to our staff and it's been integrated. So then it's up to you if you're comfortable with this. These are things that I felt comfortable, also endorsing as as mayor and also our staff, knowing that they can still deal with the cybersecurity threats, the homeless cleanups, you know, the different demands that that they're feeling and the pressures that we've asked them to implement. Illegal vacation rentals in the community, the things we've asked them to do cost money. So they had to balance it out. So if I could ask Ms. Clark if you'd present the the updated slide and then we'll then we'll go back to our list. So then I've got council. After that, Counselor Newsted, LaCoco, and Dubrowski.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. We received your amendments. We received proposed amendments from Counselor Newsted, Counselor Patel, and Counselor LaCoco. And we heard you, we read them and we heard you. So we met with the mayor and the mayor has picked them.
I just want to say, it wasn't just, and then we had verbal calls from the rest. So we want, all of council was involved in this. So I just want you to know, we heard all your comments and I brought everything forward to our finance staff as well. Thank you.
So the CAO, myself and the mayor kind of worked on a list of what, from the proposed amendments that we heard, both in writing and verbally, what could we accept? And how could we get down to the 3.9%? So what you're seeing is a list here that we have proposed. So Counselor Newsted had four, should six recommendations. I think we've we've taken four. Counselor LaCoco had several, we've taken four. And Counselor Patel, and verbally, we had others about getting down to the 3.9%. So we've added a couple more amendments there. All of these have been discussed with staff. They are supportive of them, so there's no concerns in that regard. So as staff, we can accept this budget, the mayor can accept this budget. So I think the mayor's happy to add these in and say, you know, we could settle on a 3.9% plus the 1% capital still.
So this is the updated, so council, I know Counselor Strange was just talking about 3.9 because ironically, that is the rate of inflation for this past year. Also, it's the low end of guidance that we gave to our staff. So we did, I mean, you're getting close to the bone on some of these, but we did go as far as we felt comfortable going. So now I'm going to pass it back to you because at the end of the day, we looked to council to make the final approval. And I think that's always how we've done it here, team approach. So that's the way we want to do it. So I'm going to go back to Counselor Newsted and Counselor LaCoco, then Counselor Dubrowski, and then whoever else wants to speak.
Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Clark and your team for all the work in dealing with all our, can we reduce, can we reduce, can we reduce with the big size that we got on the other end of the phone? I just want to say, based on the survey, that was the guiding principle that I was looking at for, when I did the amendments, I wanted to see what we could do to get to that 3.9% inflationary budget. I think it was consistent with what the survey results were saying. So I felt good that we were doing that. What I'm really impressed with this budget is, number one priority, and we saw that consistently, number one between all three years, are the roads and streets, water sewer and storm sewers. And when you think of it, it should be number one because it's what every, in every resident looks at. So when we're focusing on our customer, our resident, that is the number one that is affected to everyone. Not everyone will use an outdoor pool, not everyone will use a library, not everyone will go to the museum, but everyone is using our roads. But the most important thing, so this inflationary budget does allow for that priority. But what's most impressive about is that not only are these areas that everybody has, it's the number one pressing issue that we're facing today in the world, and in fact, in the world today. And it's putting additional pressure on investing on our streets. But also, not only are we trying to invest, but also maintaining our streets. And we're faced with, like that slide on Main Street, actually, I think it was deplorable between Christmas and New Year's, we had illegal dumping like I have never seen in my entire life. Our poor Gerald, I think I was on the phone with him, just losing my mind, saying, where is this happening? I think it was on Christmas holiday and he reacted, they had crews all over, but we cannot have a city look like this. So we're faced now with illegal dumping we've never seen before, encampment cleanups of needles and garbage, and it's citywide. So I really, I I see the the extra pressure that we have. And even though we're trying to keep it at inflationary budget, we're doing so by still maintaining, still addressing the absolute number one, and I will call it a threat to our community, a threat to our, the way we live. And so anyway, it's, and it has a rippling effect as as well on our regular maintenance. So I had lengthy conversation with our Director of Municipal Affairs, Eric, and he explained that the city works on a rotation cycle of 10 days. And that's just to keep, and although it's not at the highest level, it's not Disney level, but it is at a standard and a very competent level, and that's what we've seen for years. But all of a sudden, now we've got, because of this illegal dumping and encampment issues, he's being forced to pull off his teams to go and clean it. So if someone's doing this, you get pulled off. It's a very ineffective use of maintenance. And then our regular cleanup starts falling down. So it's a it's a ripple effect that just keeps on going. It's like a double whammy. And we are a tourist town. We cannot lose sight that our number one industry is the tourists. When tourists come here and they, if they see garbage and dirt, it's going to affect our tourism, our industry as well as our jobs and our community. And we don't want to live in a filthy community. So I am so happy that we have kept this record investment in the streets. Also, I do want to, as we go further, look at seeing if we can create some type of ad hoc, not that it will cost any money, but since we're on it and these are the issues that are really affecting our our community, is that we look at an ad hoc committee that we can, before adding more money, that we can add, council, municipal affairs, maybe BIA members, that we can really start to tackle this even more in depth than what this budget is allowed for, because we certainly can't keep adding more money to it. So that's something that's coming forward that I would like to see as well, and as well, the bylaw enforcement. Because the only way we're going to do that is through preventative measures and rapid response enforcement and preventive measure as well as education. So that's something that I think the budget has, is speaking to. I am really happy that we are. And yet, it's, we still will need to do more, but at least we've got a good start. And I think if we can have this overall objective that our streets look like Disney, then that's what our, while they say dream to the max, well, that's my dream to the max, is to have Disney clean streets. So at least we're tackling that. I also want to say that I'm proud that it has some, although I'm not crazy about just, and I've expressed that before for the medical recruitment, the doctor recruitment, but I am happy that we have added money into that for our budget. Just in the last week, there was the story about Walkerton and they haven't had a doctor, a family doctor there in eight years. People lined up at 2:00 in the morning in freezing cold just to get a doctor. Who would have thought ever in our province and in our country that we'd be facing that? So although it's not going to correct the 36 doctors that we're losing or that we're short, at least we're still going to have money directed towards that. So I'm really happy with that. And anyway, those are just my comments, but I thank you so much for all your hard work. It's, I'm very pleased that we can get it to, get an inflationary budget and still meet our number major pressing items. Thank you.
And I'll just add to your comment about the doctors. This budget reflects $100,000 incentive matching Wellen to help us with the recruitment. So that's important. And we put our money where our mouth is, and I think that's reflective in this budget as well. Thank you for that. Counselor LaCoco, then Dubrowski, and then Baldinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we please bring up slide number seven from the presentation? I have read this slide more times than I can count and every time I read it, I get a different perception about what we're trying to do. And then when you were explaining it now, I'm on a different page. So I just want to be clear that I understand this. I'll wait till you bring it up. Yes, that one. Am I correct in understanding that the mayor's proposed budget includes a capital levy increase of 1%? So right now, we're at 1.5 and we're going to add one.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct.
So I'm good there. Then the next part talks about the the hospital land. Now, if I remember correctly, we had a motion that we were not going to implement a levy for the hospital. We were going to defer it until next term.
Ms. Clark?
Am I correct in that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't recall, but staff just dropped the whole idea of a hospital levy.
Okay, so if we're, if we drop the hospital levy, when I go on to read it, it says adding 1.5% to the capital levy will replenish the reserve. Okay, I'm good with that. Then the next, the next paragraph says the mayor is recommending that 1% of the 1.5 staff request. And I was taking that back to the hospital levy. So are you saying that there's a 1% on the very first paragraph and then 1% for the hospital? Is that how I'm reading this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, sorry to be confusing. I was just kind of including the same logic that we used before, whether you call it a hospital levy or a capital levy, at the end of the day, it's actually to replace our reserves that could have been used for capital. So talking about the 1.5 was referencing last year's proposal of the hospital levy, but we are just suggesting a 1% this year. There is no commitment to the extra 0.5 next year, right now, today.
Right, but you're asking for a 1% on the first paragraph and then a 1% on the last paragraph? No matter if you call it a hospital levy? See, that's where I'm confused.
No, and the recommendations when we get to CS 2025-02, it's just a 1% capital levy, $910,000.
And, okay, just 1%. Nothing to do with the hospital. Okay, so I can cross out all those notes.
Thank you.
Just a couple other comments. Thank you for all of the counselors who sent in the information and staff to come up with that revised reduction. So I looked at this from the perspective of not adding any new items. I looked at new, new hires and new initiatives. And there were 27 positions. Last year, there were almost 30 positions. I sat on the phone with Ms. Clark for quite a while, going through all of the different positions, what could we possibly cut, what couldn't we, why couldn't we? Some positions were already hired, some positions removed another position and another one replaced it. positions removed, another position, and another one replaced it. So there were a lot of different things. And when I brought up my amendment list, there were 10 new positions, and I, I didn't mean to pick on any departments, so I do apologize to any of the staff. I wasn't picking on your department, but I was looking at it from a new perspective. When you're in hard economic times, it's really hard to be adding new positions. And I feel that once we add a new position, we're never going to be able to get rid of that position. And this is where most of our, our salaries, our budget is salaries, and it's very high in salaries and in benefits. So that's why I put down those 10 positions. And after seeing that new, new proposed list, it's great that we're down to 3.9, but again, we didn't cut one new position. So there were 27 positions there, but nothing has been touched. We got a lot of other things. So I, I'm concerned about the new positions. The other thing I was concerned about, and I did put this question in the portal, was about the mat. After our last conversation, I don't know where we're going with all of this, but I'm concerned that there's positions and initiatives in the budget that are using the mat. And even in this proposed one, it was utilizing the mat. I, I don't know if we need legal advice for this, or if we have to go in camera, but I'm a little leery about putting those positions or those initiatives in our budget. What happens if we don't get that funding, and we've hired positions? So I don't know if we need to go in camera.
Yeah, well, fair question. Let's go to our CAO and have him weigh in on that. I also brought the same thing up with him. I said, you know, we're just peering into the future, and asked his insight.
Thank you. Through the mayor to the council and council. Obviously, we have a confident position in where we are with, with the mat tax. Worst case scenario, if, you know, and then worst case, and I will say highly unlikely scenario, that there is no mat revenue, we're comfortable with the, the reserve level there, that we can adjust that for a year, and then, and then reposition that going forward. So that's the specific question on the mat.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our director would like to weigh in as well.
Sorry, I just wanted to touch on the new positions. So I appreciate what Counselor LaCoco said, that we haven't cut any new positions to get to the 3.9. But I did want to make sure that we know in CSS 2501, the original list of staff was actually 38 new positions, and before it even made it to council, we cut 11 of those. So just kind of provide clarity around that.
CAO, you want to add that?
Yeah, and in the customer service positions, when council approved that previously, you have to remember that there was a three-year window where there would be attrition for that. So you make the investment, you know, that, that way. We did review the positions. I understand the concept of adding new positions. The challenge that staff have, and Counselor Strange read the list, and we have a larger list if you go on, and, you know, the talk I give to staff is, it is becoming highly unlikely for city councils, not just Niagara Falls City Council, but other councils, to meet inflationary increases anymore, for a variety of reasons. You know, inflation is just the price of, you know, how things go up, and your wage contracts and that kind of stuff. But because of downloading, and because of regulatory changes, and because of societal changes, we face increasing costs. So our only response to that, and Ms. Clark had the teeter totter, is we need to grow, or we need to get more efficient. And part of the efficiency, and if you look at most of the positions that we're looking at, it's around trying to get efficient. The other thing that council, when we talk about inflationary increase, that's just our cost increase. We also have increases in the size of our city. And so we should actually be above inflation, if you factor in our inflationary cost increases, plus the growth of the city. But to deal with growth, again, we have to get innovation, so that we can have a level of staff that stays consistent no matter growth. So when you look at those positions, and you look at the weaknesses that, you know, this staff have had in the past, we've identified areas where we invest in the areas where we can get, where we can invest, so that we can become more efficient, so that we can handle growth without constantly adding more and more staff. And to be quite frank, when you compare us to other municipalities and our costs, and I can go up and down the service levels, we have more paved roads, more sidewalks, more bridges than any of our peers. You know, we're at a bit of a breaking, we are understaffed. That's why things weren't getting done. So we have to have that kind of service level that we have to get satisfied with, or service levels start to deteriorate. So I think the, a lot of the movement forward was internal investment, so we can have that innovation and platform. And then the big increases was frankly, from Mr. Nichols' department, so that we can actually catch up on some of that work. So, you know, we don't take staff increases lightly. I agree with you, Counselor LaCoco, that it is, you know, almost 60% of our budget is staff increases. But at the same point in time, you know, I don't want to use bad analogies, but we have a pretty high service level. Here, if you compare City Niagara Falls to the St. Catherine's, who has, you know, more population than us, or Wellen, and you compare our number of ice rinks to what they have, you know, you can, we have a McBain Center. Neither one of those municipalities frankly have a McBain Center. We shovel more sidewalks than both those municipalities combined. We have more bridges, we have more roads. And yet, we do it at a rate and cost that is below their, those two. And we are just not doing it well enough. So my analogy is, you can buy that sports car, you can have the McBain Center, you can have the Gale Center, you can have all these great things. But if you, if you're not willing to put the gas in the car, or do the oil changes, you're not going to have a sports car very much longer. And that's what we're balancing out. So we do balance it, and we think, you know, we have a reasonable position for staffing levels when it comes to that, for the service levels that, that you've asked us to, to perform it.
Not a food analogy this time?
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate that. Very good, very good.
Back to you, Counselor.
Thank you very much for that. That, that does explain a lot. And I'm, I'm really struggling with this, because I looked at it from a sustained, do we stay status quo? Do we reduce and cut services, or do we enhance? And in a lot of areas, we've enhanced our service level, and we've enhanced our salary levels. And I don't mean this just for Niagara Falls. All municipalities are having issues with the number of staff and the dollar amounts for salaries and benefits. If you look at my chart that was on there, I worked with Ms. Clark, point, 28% of it is benefits. That's a lot of money. When, when people look at the amount of money that we're paying our staff, they do a great job. And again, we do have to pick and choose what our, our levels of services are. And if we do have these, these cars, or Cadillacs, or whatever, we have to, we have to run them, and I do understand that. But I'm still struggling with hiring new people and new initiatives. Some of the, the suggestions that I put there were new conferences. I'm the first one to say about professional development. It's a benefit to our staff, it's a benefit to our city that people go on conferences and professional development. I just put the new ones down, because we didn't have them there before. And in the whole grand scheme of things, they're very small amounts in comparison to our big budget, but I was trying to get some. And I did have a way bigger list, but then after talking to Ms. Clark, it whittled down quite a bit. We had a great conversation. And so I, I did whittle it down, but I'm still struggling with hiring all those new people. And I understand that it was a bigger list before, and staff had, had whittled it down. So I'm going to have to think about that. The other thing I wanted to comment is what our CAO talked about. The province has downloaded so much to us, and we have to take, take the brunt of that, hire new people, get new software. Their budget is going to balance, that's great, but they've, they've downloaded things to us. So I, I do understand that, and I'm taking all of this into consideration. I think for now, I'm going to leave it there, and I'll just listen to others. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I've got Counselor Dubrowski, then Baldinelli.
Through you. Great presentation, 472 pages of numbers that you've been working on since July. It's impressive. So congrats to you and your team. And I share a little bit of the concern that Counselor LaCoco has. And when I, and I can appreciate the, the service staff that we're, we're including. I think it's about $378,000. But there's still $5.3 million increase in labor and contract organizations. And then I look at the revenue, and our revenue's not going up. So I guess my question through you to Ms. Clark, or the CAO, are a percentage of those new positions eventually revenue generating positions? Or are they more along the lines of any other city? But what percentage or what sort of positions? And I know the presentation outlines high level of numbers, and you mentioned 37, 32 positions, but maybe some feedback from staff, just in terms of what those positions entail, what they mean in the future for residents watching at home, so we can give them just a little more feedback aside from the presentation in front of us.
Sounds good, Ms. Clark. Go to our CAO, see if he has a drink of water.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, many, many areas of the city, I don't know if we could consider them revenue generating, right? We're not ever going to make money on pools. Do we earn revenue? Yes. Is it ever going to exceed what it costs us to run a pool? No. So unfortunately, I mean, other than parking being self-sustaining, and cemetery a little bit closer, still, still a deficit, but closer, we, we don't, I don't know if we could really attribute any, any revenue increases to the new positions. Where we do get our revenue is our taxation growth. What we have done, though, as an offset to some of the staffing, is we are making sure every year that we are diligently increasing our fees and our schedule of fees, right? So if wages go up 3% and your, then your fee should go up, right, to kind of keep pace with the level of subsidy we're putting against the various activities. So that is one piece we can control. And if I'm not mistaken, user fees went up about $700,000 in our budget. So that is an area that staff have focused on diligently, and council has come with us on that journey and approved that schedule of fees. So we are increasing our revenue. It's just, you're not going to get to a point where it's 100% funded by user fees.
And my point wasn't that we would fund it 100%, but our, some of the new positions in the building department, and obviously through DC charges, we generate revenue through those charges. So if the idea is to increase staff, so we could be, offer quicker service, or, or get permits to developers quicker, that'll help us generate revenue. So I'm just trying to wrap, I'm trying to wrap my head around the $5.3 billion, and that's why I asked. My other comment was, we mentioned the OLG funding, and Ms. Clark had mentioned, Ms. Clark, you mentioned mitigating, mitigating the risk of the OLG fund. And now we're mentioning the potential mat tax that we have coming into the city. Couple of questions. First being, are we looking at ways to further fund the operating budget with the mat tax moving into the future as we finalize that bylaw that council passed last week? Second question is, the OLG fund, it's never forever. Nothing's a for sure in life. But I, I think we're waiting one more quarterly payment at the end of March, I mean, this year, or OLG's the end of March, or March. Could we look at taking some of those funds that we have now? It's not a what if, but could we take a look at utilizing a million, $2 million from those funds? If we're talking about implementing mat tax for the residents, why not take the OLG funds that we have in place now, and further kind of soften the blow to residents on the taxing?
Ms. Clark?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Back to my OLG slides. Sure, could you do that? Yes. Would I recommend that? No. But I would like to see the risk of the OLG subsidy in the operating budget be decreased, rather than increased. And the reason for that, of course, is if the money goes away, would, the, the impact to increase to that level would, would be quite drastic for taxpayers. If you were to add it, like 1.2 million, like you said, if you were to add it next, into this budget to soften the blow for the residents, you have to keep it there for the rest of the years. You can't just pull it out next year, or you'd have to make that up with the levy, right? So if we just keep adding OLG funds, which some residents would love, until all 18 million is, is in there, that's a big risk. If that goes away, I don't, I don't even have the math right now on what the percentage increase would be. Also, we are using the rest of the OLG funds and aren't committed for property tax relief, majority for capital. So if you were to take all of the OLG funds and put it into property tax relief, how are you going to pay the 10, $8 to $10 million that we were using in capital? Are you going to increase the capital levy by the same amount, in which case you're still increasing the levy? So it's a bit of a balancing act with the OLG funds, and staff just feel it's much, much safer, less risky, to dedicate it as much as we can to capital. And that's kind of why we had that slide where we said, you know what, if we can get the subsidy down to 3 million, we'd be much happier with that. I'll accept that risk. If that has to go away, that's about a 3% increase, we can live with that. So that's kind of where my head's at with the OLG funds. But we do certainly get the question a lot.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. But we do have funds, and we're including a potential mat tax revenue against a lot of what we're talking about in this budget, and that's why I brought up the OLG funds. We can, we can use a fine tooth comb and go through that 472-page document and cut service, or cut committee costs, or whatever the case may be. But at the end of the day, we're talking minimal savings back to the residents. So I, I was thinking we're top level, utilizing potential funds that we do have in place now. And if we're, if we're, if we're strategizing for the what ifs with the mat tax in this budget, I just thought maybe utilizing some of the OLG funds that we do have in place at the time, at the moment now, would help offset some of the, the burden on the, on the residents. But I appreciate you answering my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dubrowski. And then we go to Counselor Baldinelli, and then back to Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff for working diligently and, and meeting council's targets, which we obviously, I got to thank the residents for calling, complaining, making their issues known. And I got to thank council for bringing those issues to, to staff, and staff working so diligently to reduce. And when we said that, we had that 3.9 to 7.5% increase, and we knew we were going to try and crack it down, too. And I appreciate everybody's input on it, especially, especially staff and what they've done. We've kicked a lot of things down the, down the, down the road from last year. We're bringing it back, easing the tax burden on, on, on the municipality. And I find what we're offering now is favorable. We can nitpick on here, here, and here. But in the, in the long run, it's better for us to move forward at this percentage, and hopefully, we can do the same for next year. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We've got, we're going back to Counselor LaCoco, then Patel. It's kind of really loud. Did it get loud in here?
It's a feedback.
Yeah.
I'm having some audio issues. I'm surprised that it's been playing. All of a sudden, I got a lot of static in the system. So try to try to just go on. Almost not unless we start. It's awful, it's bad. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I just got a complaint as well.
Yeah.
And now there's feedback.
Yeah.
That should be better. Just turn the thing down a bit. It's starting to back, and I almost have a great reaction.
Going back to the OLG, the comment I had was, in the budget, we've budgeted for $14 million of revenue. Right now, we have three quarters of, three of the quarters in, and we're at 19 million. So obviously, it's going to be more, it's more than 14 million. So there's an extra five there, plus we don't even have a quarter. So the question that was posed to me was, in the budget, we're not accounting for 5, 6, 7 million dollars of extra revenue. So I, I did talk to Ms. Clark about this, and maybe she can explain. The, the quick response was, well, then just take that 5 or 6 million dollars, and then that's, that's the levy, and then you go down to zero. And I know you've explained about using the levy, but what about the additional revenue that's not in the budget that we know is coming? Can you explain a little bit about how that would work, and where that money goes when we get the additional?
Ms. Clark?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I had a feeling this was coming. And what I've done is, I've actually pulled up our budget details for OLG funds. So I want to show you that, maybe, maybe I want to show you this. Here we go. We, as Counselor LaCoco said, we, yes, we do budget 14 million to be in the revenue. But on the flip side, in this two reserve fund section, we're budgeting 9 million of it to go out to reserves. And then that 9 million is spread out, 18% comes off the top for the policing, 700,000 is economic development, that's the Niagara Falls Innovation Hub, 271,000 goes to the airport capital, 350,000 goes to social services, and the remainder goes to future capital spending. So could I increase the OLG funds to 18 million? And just for council's reference, by the way, we just got the, the most recent payment just the other day, and it was 4.2 million. So our total for this calendar year is 18.4 million. So that's why I keep saying 18 million. Could I increase the 14 million by 4 million to 18 million? Certainly. Would I then also increase the capital spend by 4 million? Yes. Because we have agreed to a $5 million subsidy, right? So 14 million minus the 9 million to reserve funds, we've kept 5 million of OLG in here. If council directed me to increase it to 18 million, but keep the 5 million subsidy, then I would be increasing this capital spending number by 4 million also. Certainly, that can be done. We've kept it conservative at the 14 million, but at the end of the day, it kind of doesn't matter, because what matters is that net 5 million that's left as the subsidy.
Okay, and just one further question on that. If, if we were to utilize extra OLG funds this time, next year, what is the implication next year? I know we've had this discussion, and I just wanted you to explain that as well.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, if we were to, if council was to direct me to increase that subsidy, I think that's what you're saying, let's say from 5 million to 6 million, that's 1 million less that would go to capital. And that's, that's a commitment you'd have to keep in the budget, unless you then plan to wean off of it. So the progress we've made so far at weaning down to the 5 million would be erased. We'd be back up to the 6 million. Certainly, that's a decision council could make. As staff, that's a risky decision to us. Again, we are, we are in fear that that money goes away, and then you have to make it up in the capital, in the operating levy. If it's all dedicated to capital and it goes away, yeah, that hurts also. But at least you could debenture. Will there be an operating impact for debentures? Sure. But it would be a lesser impact than a, than a, if we had, let's say, the full 18 million in here. That's a big impact to the levy, right? So that's why as staff, we don't like So that's why as staff, we don't like to see the OLG subsidy increase.
Does that help? Thank you. I hope so because I've had lots of questions on it and I try to explain it best I can, but you're doing better than I am. Thank you. Two more questions. In this, we talk about museum cuts. If I can go through the mayor to Ms. Moldenhauer, what does that look like of cutting the museum hours?
Ms. Moldenhauer?
Thank you. Through to the mayor. What we are proposing is, we actually hire a number of students for, for the summer and we're proposing not hiring four students. And what that will lead to is reduced hours at the Willoughby Historical Museum and we do have lower attendance there. So we would reduce our hours there. And also looking at other reductions at the Battleground Hotel and reductions to some of our programming and exhibition costs.
Okay, thank you. The other one that was on there was $50,000 for the fire department. I want to go back to when we had the discussions about moving the communications to St. Catherine's. At that time, the fire department said that they could find some savings. I don't remember what the dollar amount was. I thought it was a couple hundred thousand compared to this 50,000. Where are we on those savings?
Chief?
If I may, through you, your worship to the counselor. We, there will be a report coming hopefully in February. We've reached out to different suppliers in terms of accurate costs and if we were to move forward with NG 911. Of course, over the Christmas holidays and they were, they've been very busy in returning those quotes, but we have them now. We're just reviewing them as we speak and as I said, we'll have more of a, a full report hopefully for the February because there's two meetings in February, either the first one or the second one, that will detail the true cost if we were to move forward with NG 911.
Okay, thank you. Through the mayor to the chief. So you, you just answered my question by saying that we were looking at a report to, to move the communications. I was speaking about the savings that was promised if we didn't move it. Do we have those savings?
Well, this report will, again, through you, your worship, the, this report will identify what the true costs are, if there are any savings at all, and also if we were to move forward because some of those costs, we really didn't know what they were because the technology was so new. And until we reached out to certain companies to find out what they were, that report that came before council was speaking about operational costs, but there are also some capital costs there that we also have to speak about. And if we want to move towards that, we have benefited from some grants, so that will also be part of the report. So council is aware of some of the provincial grants that we've received. But it will be a fulsome report in terms of operating costs, capital costs, and so that way council can make an informed decision what they want to do moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I'm explaining myself. That didn't answer my question.
I know what you're saying. So chief, when we had the gallery filled with firefighters and we agreed to keep the comms in-house, the idea was you guys are going to come back to us with $100,000 in savings. That's what I think council is asking for. Where's the savings? Where's the beef? I think that's what they're asking for.
Again, through you, your worship, some of the savings that we have worked on through this budget didn't come out of the comm center. It came from various other areas. There was $50,000 in, in our overtime budget that was proposed in this budget. And then through a request through Counselor Newisteg, we've found another additional $50,000 in various areas in our budget, in various divisions. And so that is a total, but specifically out of the comm center, which is the question that you had asked.
No, she doesn't mean out of comm.
Okay, just in general, yes. It came out of various areas throughout our budget and in various divisions at a cost of $100,000.
Okay, thank you. I do have some comments about the hub, but it's listed separately, so I'm not going to bring it up during this one because this is just a presentation, but I'll, I'll talk about the hub at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Patel.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as a lower-tier municipality, we only react to the bad policy of our level of, upper level of government. For example, let's talk about federal government. Carbon tax, that's costing our city almost $130,000 extra just on fuel. And that's going to increase because the carbon tax is going up on April 1st again and it will be about 17 cents per liter. So our costs are going to go up. And that's just one of the thing I can point out for federal government. Provincial government, they are mandating certain level of services and some mandated staff hiring we have to do because provincial government has mandated. Same with the asset management plan. How, where are we with asset management plan? Are we doing good with this capital budget?
Who would like to address the asset management? That's you, Mr. Nickel? What are you, the Director of Municipal Affairs?
Not today.
New title tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, council's heard us on two occasions come with our core infrastructure and then with our non-core infrastructure asset management plan. We do have a deficit. We're doing a lot of work right now to identify levels of service, so areas that we could increase or decrease to help respond to the deficit in our asset management planning. I think that these, the initiatives like the capital levy help us to close that gap. So council's making some really important and good strides to close that gap. We have a documented asset management plan. It's posted on our website. It's available and it's starting to inform our, our decision-making in the capital world. And I think with the decisions that council looking at this evening, we're, we're actually accomplishing a lot of the recommendations that the asset management plan have put forward. So it's that guiding light for us in our budget prep and we're, we're doing a good job, I'd say, in working towards conclusions of that report.
Thank you. And with the province, we do pay income tax and we also pay health tax. So why does municipality has to put out money for the funds to recruit a doctor? I, I'm just struggling with that question. Would somebody please answer that? Why, why should we have to put in money for the funds for, to recruit, for doctors to recruit?
Yeah, who would, Mr. CAO?
I'll try. He might not like my answer. Through the, through the mayor to the counselor, council, there is no requirement for municipality to put money out for the recruitment of doctor services. It's not a requirement under the municipal act. There are many things that we do that cities are not obligated to do and that's just one of them. At the end of the day, you know, the budget is your, the budget is your strategic plan. You could have a strategic plan, to be quite frank, that's just paper. If you don't put any money behind what you want, it doesn't mean anything. So if you, as a council, decide that doctor recruitment is important for the kind of city you want to create, you have to fund it. And, and this city, the city can choose to fund doctors, be, doctor recruitment because they think it's important, another city can choose not to. The city can choose to, you know, fund other services that other cities choose not to do. So there is no requirement to do it. The province would say that's a local decision to make your community better and that is, you know, really it. And it's up to council to make those decisions. So there is no requirement, but I think many of us feel the pressure that that is part of a complete community, that we'd want to have good medical services.
Thank you. And when we talk about the political levels of government, let's talk about region. Region makes decisions that impact us. For, for example, they put a shelter in the city of Niagara Falls. We had no say in it. They did not ask us if they can put a shelter or not, but we are stuck with the cleanup. And we have to invest quite a bit on cleanup crews just for keeping the city looking, looking beautiful. So I want to ask Mr. Nickel, how is this rapid response teams going to work and have, what is that maintenance B crew? What is that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And through the mayor, if I may, so I'll start with the maintenance B crew. So in this budget, you've seen that there's an assessment growth of over a million dollars. That means that we have a million dollars of new tax revenue from new properties. It's new subdivisions, it's new builds, new infills and all those things. Every new subdivision brings along with it new maintenance. We have some numbers that are in our asset management plan for that maintenance. But as we bring on new properties to maintain as a city, you know, a brand-new property, brand-new streets don't require patching and potholes, but they require roadside maintenance and roadside mowing. So as we've grown, we haven't added additional crews to maintain the new developments that we have. And we're projecting a lot of growth to come as well in new subdivisions and new, new developments. We have the secondary plans we're looking at. So this new maintenance B crew adds a distinct crew that can, can be deployed into areas where we are not meeting our 10-day cycle, as Counselor Newisteg pointed out. So we can start to change the, the geography of where our crews are going, right? We're adding new land in. So what we're doing is we're taking our maintenance cycles and we're adding new pieces in, but we're not adding new people to those, to those geography. So this will add a new, a whole new crew for seasonal maintenance. It will allow our, our existing crews in areas where they can't keep up to, to have a more manageable crew. This August, we were shocked. It, it was just a, the grass was growing just as quickly as it did in May and, and we heard from the residents that we can't keep up. So this new crew is going to help to make sure that's a manageable B. The second thing that we've added in as a, as a, probably the most important thing, I would say, to address the cleanup issues and the items that were presented in the presentation for budget today is a roving rapid response crew. And that crew is, is not assigned to any one area. It's assigned anywhere it needs to go and it's linked to our new customer service initiative that's launched later this year. So anytime that there's an issue that comes up, so if it's graffiti, if it's a sign down, if the grass wasn't cut in time, we will hear from residents that we will be able to deploy this crew within the same day or maybe next day. It's only one crew and we usually work 12-hour shifts during the summer. So that's a four-day shift. We can't service the other three days of the week because we don't have the people. But with that seasonal crew, we'll be able to get out to that problem area right away. And what that will do is it will allow our crews who are cutting grass or doing pothole patching to stay in their area instead of packing up and then moving out and doing something and then coming back. So it'll do two things. It will clean up the problem area quicker and it will keep our crews assigned to the areas where they need to be to finish their maintenance quicker. So it'll, it will prevent problems before they start by getting to maintenance in the right time and it will promptly address those new problems that we just haven't been ready for because there are new problems in our community. Littering from, you know, public space littering where people will go and put their, their garbage bags in our garbage bins in parks. We have to stop our route, go pick up that garbage, now bring it back to our yard. So it means we're not doing something else that's more important. This crew is dedicated to doing all those little things that the rest of our crews wouldn't normally do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really excited for the rapid response team because I know we spoke on the phone and I'm the one of the council always calls you with all those problems most of the time because I do get complaints from residents with the garbage is in the parking, in a park and we have homeless leaving all the garbage all over the place and grass not cut on the time. So I'm the one of the council who probably calls you all the time. So I'm really excited about that team. And I have one more question for, I'm not sure if Tiffany can answer it. We have the software cost in our budget. So would that be yearly cost? Are we looking at IT department's cost when it comes to security software and all the other softwares? Is it yearly cost or is it one-time cost?
Ms. Clark?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The increase in our budget would represent what we expect our annual costs to be going forward. So it's not, there was a cup, there was one one-time item and we actually offset it with reserve funding, knowing that it won't be happening in the future. But anything that's an ongoing cost has been added to the budget.
And I do agree with what Ms. Clark said, that we can't rely on OLG funds for our taxes. But we all learned from COVID-19 what happened, the casinos were closed, even same comes to MAT tax. Same thing that happens with what happened to COVID-19, nobody's going to hotels and we won't be getting MAT tax. We can't rely on MAT tax either. I do understand that we have certain, certain other revenues we are generating in the city that's a, very nominal number of revenues we're generating from our community center and whether it's property tax and one of the major revenue should be parking. As you know, most of the city's revenues are parking. And a couple other ideas I have, I'll be bringing forward those motions next meeting that would create more revenue for the city. And I do agree that we do have a vacant building registry and that is bringing quite a bit of revenue in the city. So I, I do get it, we always keep on looking at the bottom line when it comes to our city budget, but currently our revenues are very limited. Top line is not moving as much, but bottom line is moving because our expenses are going up. So I do appreciate all the detailed explanation of the budget and I was disappointed, same as Counselor LaCoco said, when we talked about, we didn't reduce any new positions, but with Ms. C, Mr. CEO's explanation, it does actually give, give me good confidence that the positions were not reduced because we do not want to reduce the services and that is going to be paid off in the future. Thank you.
It's a good thing because the CAO does have a reflective vest and a stop sign in his office just in case we need to, you know, send him out to do other things, you know?
Former Safety Patrol Captain.
Former Safety Patrol Captain and, and yeah, very effective and versatile. The other thing I want to point out too, and the danger, the thing that we've learned from OLG funds, not becoming too reliant on them is Fort Erie. When they used to have bingo revenues, long time ago. And at one point, when they lost those, remember it was two years of double-digit property tax increases and it was very tough to recover. And they did, but they had to go through some turbulent times before they could get there. So we, success leaves clues and, you know, we learned a few lessons from Fort Erie for sure. So thank you, Counselor. Now we go to Counselor Newisteg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, I'm going to segue. It was a good segue from Counsel Patel regarding staff. I, I think there's a thing that we have to look at because again, with Counselor LaCoco, we look at all this staff and we're thinking, oh my goodness, there's so much. But far be it for us to understand where the staff is and I appreciate our CEO, our CAO's telling us that we just don't know our, the cost that we've been working behind. And I think a good example of that is, we know that we've lost out on grants because we haven't had the staff in place to keep on different things. So when we're looking at staff, I think we have to look at, to Counselor Dubrowski's point, not just are they a revenue-producing, but are they a cost? So if we don't have them, is it actually costing us? So going back to Mr. Nickel, if we don't have that rapid response, it is costing us, may not costing us per dollar, but it is costing us overall in our city. So I think, and actually, I want to give a compliment over to the legal department. Very impressed, I'm just going to look, now there's a department that they decreased their labor expenses $57,000, 7.6 from 759 to 701 by removing of an assistant city solicitor and, and use some of that money to fund articling students and, or an articling student and two summer students. So I don't know if that's a challenge that we can put out to staff is that if there are other ways that they can look at how they can reduce or get by without reducing service staff, maybe that is something that we can say that. So it's definitely a revenue versus cost. It's not just revenue-producing, but what is the actual cost of not having these services? So, and in saving that, I would not touch that rapid response team because that is something that, even though it's an increase in staff, where would we be if we don't have that route? And the thing with the, the streets, if we don't get a hold of it, we will fall so far behind that we will not see a tourist in, in the street. Nobody will, even if we are one of the lowest tax places to live, nobody will want to live here if there's garbage all over the streets because that also brings in other problems like rodents. So the cost ends up being far greater. So I think we're just, I appreciate the fact that there's a lot of staff, but this is a big city too that we need to keep in mind. I do have another question through Mr. Mayor to Mrs., yeah, you knew exactly, you just looked at. The Boys and Girls Club, we're funding 241,000, I believe, to the Boys and Girls Club. What are the residents getting for that fee? I just question there and whether we can make sure our service level is high for what we're paying.
Ms. Moldenhauer?
Thank you. Through to the mayor. The Boys and Girls Club, the city does provide fee for service funding to them. And the money is to assist the, the club with their facility costs such as the, the pool and the gym. When the department completed a 10-year plan, a city of our size, it is recommended that you have two pools. So we do support the club to, to keep their pool going. However, the facility is only open Monday to Friday and it is not open on the weekend for various reasons. So there's limited access to our community members. I have been in communication with their executive director and I have informed her informed her we need to sit down, just to look at their hours and to really determine exactly what the city is paying for through the fee-for-service.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. The Boys and Girls Facility is wonderful, but I just hope that we are getting maximum benefit for that $241,000 because I see how the McBain Center is going at full speed. So we can do that.
Yes. And we do have a waiting list. So we have reached out to see if they could help us with our waiting list for our swim lessons, for example.
So if we were able, if they, is there a possibility through, Mr. Mayor, for them to be open on the weekend? Like, could we just take over their facility for two days on the weekend so we can provide our residents without, like, within that same $241,000?
It's a conversation I need to have with them, just to see if it is feasible and to look at other options.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no further questions or comments on the presentation, we do have one member of, one person in the audience, I think, that registered to speak. Mr. Clerk, can you just confirm with me?
Yeah, I should point out that Dan Bordnavi, or Bordnavi, sorry, is available online should anyone had to be, any questions regarding the hub. And also, we do have Mr. Frank DeLuca, who has registered to speak.
Okay. Mr. DeLuca, come forward and again, state your name and your address. You know the, you know, the exercise.
Hi, Frank DeLuca, 4341, Kimwood Place, Niagara Falls, Ontario.
Right, so you took the microphone on there, just the red button at the base there. The base of the microphone, if you follow it down. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we sound better.
There you go.
Tiffany Clark, if you could put up slide that shows the house at $280,000.
Assessed values?
Okay. Before I begin, I think you did a fantastic job with the budget. And whatever we've had and whatever the issues and problems we have, it's got nothing to do with you. You've done a fantastic job of the budget. So please, sleep well tonight. Secondly, presentation that was done is excellent. And I think that, I'm going to say this, the mayor is a great marketer, and I think this is an opportunity to put this on a TikTok, to explain to all those, and a serious video to talk about this because this is a very good explanation of exactly, because a lot of people have questions and they don't understand it. Those are my two suggestions. So that's my house.
Oh, is that? That's hilarious.
1,350 square feet, and lots of mans-
Which ones, sorry?
The one on the right.
On the right. It's a nice landscape.
Yeah, thank you. So I use this as my example. That's the exact same style as my house. My house is on the corner. That's on Willinger. It's right around. So everything I know about that house is everything that's on my house. And so just to start out, 15 years, 2010, that house was $200,000 assessed value. House value has doubled, two and a half times now, that house. The assessments have been two and a half percent per year, and up to now, it's 40%. So that house was 200 in 2010. In 2025, it's 40% higher, which is 280. Taxes have gone up in those 15 years, 3%. Our taxes at that time were 2250, somewhere around there. They've doubled. So 15 years, our taxes doubled. We take on opportunity for the assessment. We also take the opportunity for the tax increases. Our expenses have doubled. So now, where do we go from here? We have, I could list things that we shouldn't have bought. That's not the problem. The problem right now is we deal with what we have right now. And anytime development charges go up, that's a tax. Anytime there's a user fee, that's a tax. Anytime there is parking fees go up, that's a tax. So I'm going to take a totally different approach to this. What we need to do, and if you're going to support a budget, you're supporting the changes that are going to be done, and you support the 3.9%. If you don't support the budget, then you come up with an alternative budget and tell us what we want to cut. Now, moving forward, I would rather do it this way, is mandatory in this day and age that we freeze hiring from now on, not what we've decided today. We need to freeze spending. We need to absolutely not spend on anything that's nonessential. We need to sell all developable zoned land, parking lots. We are not, just because we're making, we're not making any money on it, sell the parking lots. There's lots of people that can generate revenue, tax revenue, and provide the service that we don't normally, we don't have to provide. Those people can be allocated somewhere else. What we need to do is keep selling. We have buildings that I believe should be sold or leased to the proper person. I'll use the example of the Convention Center. Convention Center should be just leased to the BIA, and then we are, we're no longer allowed about the legacy costs and towards that building. We need to sell the lands that are already being targeted now. And we need to zone them first, and we sell them at market value. Take that money, December 1st, whatever we make up until December 1st, whatever that number is, that's an opportunity to provide the residents with a tax rebate every December 1st. Nothing to do with the budget. It's just a amount of money that we sell these properties for, and we provide a tax rebate for people. I have said this before, and I'll say it again. The other part of this, and I know I've gone over the time, and it's just one more thing I just wanted. We have talked about it. We've talked about it a million times, and the time is now for to get rid of the region. Let's start to merge the four cities, the four writings, whatever they are. Let's do it. Let's not waste about it. We are doing, if we're doing an incredible job, let's merge with Niagara Falls Lake. We have the writing set up. There's four writings here. We have a wonderful set of representatives here. Let's run one of them. And let's put those six people or eight people, whoever they are, in charge of what goes on in the region. Because then, I only have eight people to blame. I don't have other people to blame that aren't here in this room. And I don't, I'm not trying, I guess maybe I'm a little bit passionate about this situation. It's because we do a very good job of doing what we do. So let's try to do it for the entire area. And the savings are tremendous. I don't care what anybody says. If you, you have 13 CAOs, and our CEO is good, and you know what? We can keep him. He can maybe move to the region, whatever. It's up to him. In joking, what I'm saying is, we have 13 CAOs. We have 13 deputies. We have 13 economic, well, economics is gone now. We have 13 of each. We only need four, one for each writing, for each area, and one for the region. And these people meet twice a week. The one, they meet in their writing and their area, and then they meet once a week at the, and then your job as the mayor is now the same there, and you are now a member of the region. And all the six people or eight people that are there, that's what needs to happen. That's where you get tax savings. That is ultimately at least a 25%
Reduction?
Thank you. Do my speech for me. Tax savings for each one. Yes. And I know you're hitting your watch again. And so what I'm suggesting to you is that, we've talked about it enough. It's time to, talk is done. It's time to go to the, to the, to the, who can do it? Because the politicians and the other regions aren't going to do it. It's the region, sorry, it's the province that can do it. And let's get to them now because apparently we have their ear. And let's have their ear, and let's tell them that it's time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have a question of councillor Newisteg. She has a question for you.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just want to say sentiments exactly. We sit here and we try and figure out different ways that we're going to decrease expenses, but we're only at 3.9%. The region's at 9.6. Exactly to your point, we, no matter how hard we try and we start nickel and diming here and there, the bigger issue is that we are ineffective, inefficient, because we are structured based on something that was designed 50 years ago. Our world has changed immensely, and we cannot continue to do the same old thing this, the way we've been doing it. It's layer and layer of bureaucracy, and how we have a street that belongs to us, and the region has a street that intersects it. We've got our snowplow, they've got their snowplow. And going back to councillor LaCoco, they put a shelter in our area, and we've got cleanup that we have to pay for. Or maybe it was, I'm not sure which one, maybe it was councillor Patel. But exactly to that point, we cannot keep doing it. We are at the bottom tier, and we end up with everything that just keeps getting dumped and dumped and dumped on us. And we struggle trying to keep our taxes down. We feel, we hear from the people, and we are concerned about tax affordability of our taxpayer. But we are stuck as far as we can. So I think your comment about the region is-
We're not stuck.
Well, no, we're not. We have to, yes. And I can't agree more with you. We cannot continue doing this. The region is not, we are not working effectively. We're the only government left down here with this two-tiered government. Hamilton gave it up, Toronto gave it up, London gave it up. And we've got how many politicians in this area?
138.
Way too many. 126 for our area. It's way too many. It just doesn't make any sense. And our poor taxpayer is bearing the brunt of it all. So things have to change. And I applaud you for coming here and speaking up because you are right on the point here. The region, or we have to just, whether it's region, municipality, we have to rethink how we are structured because it is not working.
Okay, can I correct you on one thing? You got to count yourself twice. You are a regional-
I did. I did the 126, including me. I did it all. I got it on, I'll say-
Check your math.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll say it if it's wrong.
Okay.
All right.
Deal. Thank you. Okay, folks, I need a motion to receive the presentation. A motion by councillor Newisteg, second by councillor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, thank you for that. So no, now we move on to 5.4. This is CS 202503, Boards, Commissions, Fees for Service, Grants, Honorarium Recommendations. So I am going to go back to Ms. Clark and give her the floor once again.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We just put together a separate report that kind of highlights the fee-for-service boards, commissions, grants, and honorariums, something we've always done. It's kind of a lot of information all at once in all of these reports, so we kind of pieced that one out separately. If you draw your attention to the attachment, the fee-for-service groups, boards, commissions, all of the whole kit and caboodle, their plan to go up by about $215,000. And that's largely an increase in the library's service, very reasonable 3.3% increase, $183,000 for the library. And then smaller cost of living increases on our animal control contract, our fireman's park contract, and St. John's Ambulance Water Patrol. So this report's just asking for approval for those fee-for-service. If I didn't name a group, they did not have an increase. Their status quo, zero. And some of them are funded by other funds, particularly the Niagara Falls Innovation Hub is funded by the OLG funds, as well as the airport capital portion of their ask is funded by the OLG funds. And that's also noted on the attachment. So just looking at that approval for those, all those various groups listed on attachment one.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Clark? Yes, councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the one that I have the conflict on for the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, but I'll speak to other on here. I know that the clerk said that Mr. Bordnavi was on the line, so I'm not sure if he would like to answer questions or if our CIO would answer these questions.
Take, is, do we have to confirm? Is he still there? Yeah?
He is.
Okay, good, good. So why don't we, did you want to deal with that first, councillor?
Sure.
Then he can, we can let him go?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, there he is. Hi, Sam. Okay. Welcome, welcome, Dan. Okay, okay, the floor is yours, councillor.
Thank you. Do we have an update on the FedDev grant?
I'd like to pass that question on to the CIO. It is a city application, a hub application. We're just a partner in that application.
Mr. CIO?
That's correct. I believe Ms. Davidson is also online. Mr. Felicetti is enjoying a birthday party, I believe. The FedDev application, the, there, we were unsuccessful with our previous FedDev application, and we are looking to apply for another FedDev application. My sense of the intake, it will be after a federal election, which appears to be kind of destined for this year. But the budget that has been proposed by the Innovation Fund, they've made up for revenue from other, from other sponsors and from other revenue sources, and therefore, you know, they are, they are planning to run with a budget going forward with our FedDev application. If another application process comes through, council will be made aware of that. And because it, as Mr. Bordnavi says, it is our FedDev application, and we have to commit to a level of funding as part of that FedDev application.
Thank you. Committing, you just spoke of committing, and that was my next question, actually. So if the FedDev application comes through, that commits us for four years? So am I correct in saying that this budget for 2026 would be $700,000, the city only, and then the FedDev application would be 2.8 on top of the 700 for a commitment for four years? Is that correct?
Mr. CIO?
Yeah, no, not necessarily. Like I said, if we do apply, that would come separate to council. And we could reallocate some of our funding for the FedDev purposes and change how the, you know, change how the Innovation Hub operational programs are. So, you know, if we are applying for a FedDev application, that will come to council for that decision going forward.
Okay, so we haven't put in an application yet. We're looking to do something after the federal election. And if an application does come, it will come to council.
It'll come to council. It'll be in camera because FedDev is very specific on how to do that, and it would be part of our negotiation process. So that would be something that we'd look for. I don't believe there's another intake, but I will look to Dan or Angela if they know of, if there is an announced secondary intake. I know it's a fairly open process, but we have to correct some things from the city before we apply. So we're probably not looking to be ready to apply till the fall anyways again.
Okay, thank you. At the last time when I talked about the hub, I think the CIO talked about a new company. Now, my understanding for FedDev, it's usually for a startup company. Am I correct in that? So if we start up a new company, is that a new startup? And why was the other FedDev grant denied? Like, what, does it not meet their criteria? Is it, I don't know. I thought it was for startup.
Mr. CIO?
Through the chair. Starting a new company is one potential. We may just rebrand. There's some discussion of potentially rebranding the hub. That has not been decided at this point in time, either one of those items. The FedDev application was unsuccessful, or one of the reasons it was unsuccessful was we were not current, the city of Niagara Falls, not, it was not current with the financial statements. I think Ms. Newisteg, councillor Newisteg, had made that comment about, you know, not having certain resources costs us money sometimes. And finance department is, you know, rapidly trying to get caught up on that so that we can meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you. In the past, on the FedDev grants, we talked about how successful the hub would be in bringing in new businesses and new initiatives and new inventions that the city would benefit from the profit. I know that we haven't received any up until this point. Is that something that we're going to be looking at moving forward?
Mr. CIO?
Because that's the way it was presented to us, that we would want to invest in to get something back.
I'll start the answer, and I'll pass that off to Mr. Bordnavi. I, you know, the previous structure that was construed is no longer there. If we go forward with the potential for seed capital, it wouldn't come to the city. It would be there to fund the hub so that the city could reduce its funding going forward. And then, but there are other benefits with regards to the spinoffs. I think Mr. Bordnavi and a number of his board members had made a fairly lengthy presentation a few council meetings ago with regards to their annual report and the number of businesses, the, the women's businesses that were created. And I can't remember, it's Women's Something Market. I can't remember the one that's-
Magnus and Women's Market.
Magnus and Women's Market, thank you. That was there. So that was part of a previous report. If we get into the seed funding, that would be something that Dan and his board would take a look at. The intent would be for that to offset future costs of the city for the Innovation Hub. But I'll let Mr. Bordnavi speak to that point specifically.
Perfect. Thank you. Through you, councillor Coco. You know, typically, most Canadian taxpayers and sellers in Canada don't necessarily take equity for funding. It's a very common practice in the United States. But traditionally, there's an exchange of monetary funds. It's a very common practice in the United States, but traditionally, there's an exchange of monetary funds for that investment. You know, so $25,000 for 5%, whatever the case is. So, those are still in play. Of course, you know, we would be a much larger budget to you, to do those investments, of course. So, if we end up raising sponsors, more sponsorship, or we're going to getting more funding eventually from another source, those could be potential options, too. But it would have to be a monetary transaction. You would have to exchange some sort of form of money for equity as well, too. And I know that the DMZ in Toronto does that, too. I believe it's $25,000 for, you know, 3% or 4% of the company, but don't quote me on that. But again, you have to provide that money for that exchange because his lawyer's involved in all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor?
Would the city be a shareholder in this new company?
Thank you, through the chair. No, it'd be a, it was, it'd be a non-share capital corporation, so a not-for-profit corporation.
Not-for-profit, okay. When looking at number 6.2 on our agenda, there's a memo there and budget per se, I'm a little bit challenged in that over $1 million is going for labor and expertise. Some of the other models that I've looked at, they have specific grants that go to the new businesses. Out of a $1.5 million budget, 1 million is going to salaries, and I'm a little bit challenged with that. And this, the, I have a question about the promissory note repayment. Is that the city repayment, or is that somebody else?
Why don't we go to Mr., are you going to do that? Okay.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. The promissory note is a repayment to the holdco because the, the hub had to pay for some air conditioning expenses that are being reimbursed by the landlord.
And on the wages, we can go to Mr. Bordenave? The question on the wages?
Absolutely. So, you know, for the labor, that's about 10 jobs, too. So, it's an average salary of about 60, that's 7,000, so just above, you know, a living wage salary. And in regards to the expertise, that accounts everything from the, you know, accountants that we sometimes use for, for finances, some legal that we often use for structure. This goes in coaches that we often have and guest lectures that we bring into the organization for those reasons. And a lot of the expertise is actually funded by the most recent Rural Economic Development Fund that we received.
Okay, thank you. I know that the $700,000 is coming out of the economic and its OLG funds. It is still taxpayers' usable money. I know it's not taxpayers' levy, but it is money that the, the taxpayers could be getting a benefit from something else. And I don't know if I've seen a good ROI on what we've been looking at before, and I don't think the taxpayers are getting good, good value out of it. So, one of my, my amendments on my list was to remove this. We have to curb our spending, and I, I know, again, it's not affecting the tax levy, but we could use that $700,000 for something else for the residents. Those are all, I think, the questions that I have at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And maybe we could talk to Dan and just exactly how many startups have been, have been made? How many companies maybe this year and in total? I know you did a presentation recently, but, you know, recently, we just put the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee there. We're having our meetings there. They're so excited, they're actually going to go and they're going to start their own podcast now. They're going to be ambassadors for the Innovation Hub throughout their high schools, which is just amazing. So, it's going to be, mean more high school students going there. I think, I believe, every Wednesday, they have students coming through from, from grade schools and high schools as well. Dan, if you can just give me a summary of what's going on at the club, at, at the hub right now, and, and even, even their, their rate, it's coming from the OLG, just like the reserve, or just like the, the stuff that the library's asking for is coming from development charges. It's the same thing. And they're asking actually for a couple booths or something to do, podcasts, and maybe we can use their resource. I know Dan would probably let the library, the, the people from the library come and use their, their podcasts so we can save on that money if we wanted to do that, just like they're saving money because they're doing the, the 3D printing from the library there. And I think they gave you all the printers, too, did they not, Dan? And that weren't working because they weren't taken care of. So, if you can, the 0% increase for you and the 3.3 increase to library, I think the Innovation Hub's doing a great job.
Mr. Bordenave?
Thank you, through you. Yeah, so just a couple of quick data points. So, in the last year, we've supported 80 new companies. So, these are brand-new companies that have joined the hub through our programs, and what I mean by support, they actually join our programs. Each of our programs are about five months long, too. So, it's quite a commitment from individuals to, you know, give up that much time of their personal life to run their business. But, you know, the, the most important thing is that of those 80 companies, over 70% were directly from Niagara Falls, which is huge, because you're looking at the population that, you know, it's not necessarily the biggest in the region, but it's certainly producing a lot of entrepreneurs. You know, this is a lot of people's livelihoods. They come in and they work every single day. This is how they make their living, and if it wasn't for a place like this, you know, a lot of these companies would be moving themselves out of here to other, perhaps other places in the region, perhaps other places outside of the region, too. So, it, it's, it's certainly a movement that's occurring there. You know, those 80 companies have to create 135 jobs. They run millions and millions of dollars of revenue as well, too. So, you know, the economic spin-off is that you're providing a path of, of people to, the ability to make an income, be entrepreneurs, which we know that 95% of Canada's economy is based on small and medium enterprises entrepreneurs. So, we're just, you know, helping to support our, our biggest asset in the country, which is small and medium enterprises.
And what about the students that come through weekly?
Yeah, so we, we started a program, called the STEAM program. We have over 1,000 students every year. In fact, you know, we, we have a waiting list of students waiting to come in. We provide them with programming so that we can, you know, retain these youth. It's no secret that a lot of these youth do go to larger cities to find employment. So, we're just trying to, you know, install the entrepreneurship bug in them at a young age so that they become entrepreneurs, they become business owners, and they want to keep their businesses here in Niagara Falls. And not only do we do that, we do Indigenous program, too, Indigenous Youth Program with the local Indigenous centers here, where we cater the program and tailor the program to fit the Indigenous community. We have the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council that is starting to use the hub, too. We have field trips. We have a lot of, like I said, a lot of opportunity for youth because of Lions Club coming in here, using the space, too. So, you know, it is a, a safe space for a lot of entrepreneurs that they call home to run their business, both young and old.
And if the library need to use your, to do podcasts, is that available? Because I know you do the 3D printing as well, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. All the facilities are available to the community, especially the podcast studio, the 3D printers. We did sign an MOU with libraries in which we did have access, and we overtook some of the 3D printers. We, you know, some of them weren't salvageable. We still have them in storage, but some of them we were able to, to fix on our own dime, to fix them, get them up and running so that the community can use them. So, yeah, all of our services, offices are open to members of Niagara Falls.
Well, that's great that you can help the library like that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Is there any other questions or?
I see Angela has her hand up.
Angela?
On Zoom.
Oh, on Zoom, okay, okay, yeah, yeah. Ms. Davidson? Ms. Davidson, yes?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. I just wanted to speak a little bit as well about how the hub has been an extension and a fantastic partner to the Business Development Department, and it's really allowed us to extend our breadth of work that we're doing with companies in the city, and as well allows us to extend the capacity that we have as a small department. As many of you know, we have a Small Business Enterprise Center, and that Enterprise Center works with startups and provides a variety of programming and grants to those businesses. Our Enterprise Center uses the hub and the space at the hub very frequently, and a lot of the clients that we have coming through our Enterprise Center become clients of the hub afterwards, and then oftentimes will work with members of our Economic Development Team. So, it's really an extension of the services that we have. We've also been able to provide additional space with Dan, run seminars and events, really work with our community partners, and allow some of our larger businesses to get the kind of experience or expertise that they're looking for through some of these engineers for the Proto-Hype Program, space in the Magnificent Women's Market. So, there's a lot of benefits that our Business Development Department is finding being able to work with the hub. So, Dan's been a fantastic advocate for that center, and the businesses that are coming out of there, many of them, as Dan mentioned, are businesses located in Niagara Falls and businesses that are looking to continue to operate in the falls. So, just wanted to mention that we work with them very closely, and we're very happy with the services that they're providing.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Strange, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot about your partnership with the university. How does that work with the new University of Niagara Falls, Dan?
Yes, thank you, through you. So, the partnership with Niagara Falls is we're providing their students with work-integrated learning opportunities, capital and projects, too. So, any business in the community of Niagara Falls for absolutely no charge, for free, can access these services, capital and projects, where if you want a marketing strategy, if you want to review your business plan, if you want to review your financials, if you want your data analyzed, you're going to have access to these students. And again, not just undergrads, these are graduate-level students that are looking to make that career opportunity for them, too. So, you're going to get quality work. You know, we're always actively looking for different partners, different community, businesses in the community to take advantage of these great opportunities. But it's a great way to get inexpensive labor to do a lot of mundane tasks that need to be done for a business, but you don't necessarily have the time or the energy to do.
Thank you very much. I think that's so, so important for, for young students to get in there and partner up with you guys, and, and like Counsel, Counselor Baldinelli says, he's got a lot of ideas, and I'm sure enough, soon enough, he'll come in there and, and try to get some help from you guys as well. So, thank you so much.
Everyone's welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Patel?
Thank you, Dan, for the, for answering the questions. Mr. Mayor, I have been to the hub quite a few times, and it's an amazing facility. It's not just for young, any entrepreneurs and people who have home-based businesses, they can go there and use it as office, and they have 3D printer, they have CNC machine. All you do is take your program, and it'll cut it for you. All I find is, it's not advertised enough. I think it needs to be advertised more in the community so lots of community members can go there, use the services, or become the members. And I do know that they do have young kids coming, and they're encouraging entrepreneurship in the young kids. That's amazing. Last time when I was there, Dan was telling me, it's not just entrepreneurs and home-based businesses, lots of professionals who are using the services. He was telling me, I think you are working with some doctors or engineers to develop some prototype. Right, Dan?
Mr. Bordenave?
Yes, sorry, through you. Yes, that is correct. We have actually a few doctors that come and work out of here who are willing to, that want to innovate. So, yeah, we do support them on different types of prototype, different types of business structuring as well, too, and it's strategy to create their ventures.
So, thank you, Dan, and I think that the hub is a great asset in our city, and I just, they, I just hope that we can advertise it better so people know about the service so they can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Counselor Dubrowski?
Well, I'll keep it brief. Through you, Dan, thanks for the presentation, and I echo Counselor Patel's comments. We should advertise it better. If there's, and I never look for the negative anything, but if there's one thing that the hub could improve on, it's just marketing to the, to the young professionals and the young entrepreneurs, and it's for all ages. And I think back to, I'm born and raised here in the city, and I think back to when I was 18 or 19 years old and had a lot of ideas like Counselor Baldinelli has back then, and I didn't have an outlet or an avenue to get together with like-minded people and discuss ways to grow a business or, or how to promote a business or market a business. And one thing I love about the hub is that in a city that we rely so heavily on tourism, it's a place where young entrepreneurs are building businesses that are online, that aren't necessarily tourism-based, and they're creating the economic impact and the driving force into our municipality. So, wish you continued success, and it's nice to hear about all, all the great businesses, and you mentioned 80 businesses, and I think we could triple that. And once we communicate to the community and to the young professionals about the hub being not a place for entrepreneurs, but the place for entrepreneurs, so keep up the great work and look forward to seeing the progress and the success stories in the coming years.
Thanks, Dan. And Angela, thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got Counselor Newsteag and then Strange.
Yeah, just quick about, about getting it, more marketing and stuff about the hub. So, we just, Dan came up with the idea of actually, because we're, Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is having their meetings there, so they're going to be the ambassadors of the hub. So, there's five high schools, five students from, from every school. They're going to be ambassadors to, to, to get all those high school students to come to the hub. So, it was a great idea by Dan. We were talking about it last week, so we're, we're going to work on that in the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Counselor Newsteag?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to reference an article that was in the Globe and Mail. I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's, it's quite lengthy, on, on December 31st. And basically, it's saying Canadian politicians must learn to respect entrepreneurs and their capital. And it's basically encouraging startups and, I'll, I'll read a few paragraphs here. A key message often communicated to entrepreneurs is the importance of respecting the capital provided to their companies, financial and human capital. This message should resonate equally loud with Canadian politicians who sometimes fail to recognize that capitalists put loose financial and human capital flow to higher-return, lower-risk opportunities wherever they may be. But it goes on to say, on a bright spot, one bright spot has been the growth of Canada's startup ecosystems. Major Canadian universities and regions across the country have established programs that provide support and mentorship to help founders during the crucial startup development phase for new ventures. Anyway, the whole article goes on to saying how encouraging it is that we, or how we must encourage it. Also, there's the other part about the tax implication with policies, but it's identifying how important we have to be doing this, because if we don't do it, we will not have the young, the investment in, in our country. So, an article out of the Globe and Mail just saying exactly what we have in our city. So, I'm, something we should be proud of. Anyway, just thought I'd share that.
Appreciate that, thank you. Yes, Counselor Strange?
Just one, one last thing, Mr. Mayor, right? And just basically, some of the, some of the stuff that the hub does, number one, economic development, job creation. Number two, fostering collaboration and creativity. Number three, upskilling and education. Number four, retaining and attracting talent. Number five, strengthening local economies. Number six, promoting sustainability. And number seven, what our downtown needs is community revitalization.
Thank you for that. Thank you, thank you. Yes, Counselor Patel?
Mr. Mayor, I want to echo what Counselor Strange said earlier with the young people going to the hub. Especially, I'm glad that my meetings will be happening at the hub right now, especially with the high school students. Most of the students think that it's the university or college, that's the only way to go forward. And when they have resources, then somebody guiding them this, in a direction of being entrepreneur, I think they can flourish further. And that is the one aspect is missing in our school system right now, is we only teach them whether they go in the trades, whether they go, trades, it's perfect. It's, it's a great, great, great way to, a great way to go. Trades, university, college. Not many schools are promoting the entrepreneurship, and I think every young kid's have ideas like Tony has and the way Counselor Dubrowski had on the napkin. And I think kids' mind works very fast and better than what older people's mind, mind works. So, I think it's a great way to bring young kids there, just to teach them there is another way to move forward, not just university or college, because that's not for everyone. So, I'm really glad to hear that my meetings are happening there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, well, if there's no further comments on that, we are looking for, there's a recommendation that council approved, the 2025 funding levels and classifications for boards and commissions, fee-for-service grants and honorariums as presented in Attachment One. Looking for a motion, Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. If there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Yes, Counselor?
Could we possibly just pull out the hub? I don't want to not approve the whole, the whole report.
I just need some clarification from staff if, can we, like, the way the motion is, or Mr. Clerk? I know you guys tell me if that's okay to do. Mr. Clerk?
Or who, or Ms. Clark? Clerk or clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, I don't have a concern if we vote separately, but I mean, the dollar values, yes, they won't make sense because it is included in those dollar values. You'd have to subtract the 700,000 from it. But if you want to craft your own motion that just approves them and ignore my dollar values, that's fine.
Okay, so why don't we do it like this, then? So, the first one, we'll do everything with the exception of the hub? Okay, we'll do the first one with the exception of the hub? Is that okay? Are you comfortable with that, Counselor? Is that what you're saying? Yes, everything but the hub. So, we'll call the first vote. So, we've got the mover, we've got moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. And then the second one, we're going to vote on the hub. So, the motion, the same, but for the hub, for the 700,000. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. We'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, with Counselor LaCoco opposed. So, we'll move on beyond that one. Thank you, Mr. Bordenave and Ms. Davidson.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to five point five. So, this is the Mayor's 2025 Tax Levy Supported Budget, and this is the updated one that has us at three point. Pardon me? No? What, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, this is the 4.5%. So, if, if we're settled that this is the rest of the amendments, if I could ask for like a 15-minute recess, I can get you some updated totals, and, and I'll throw those recommendations on the screen.
Okay.
With the strikeout and the revised total.
So, what we're going to do right now, we've, we've got the budget down to 3.9 with everybody's in. with everybody's input. Thank you for that. We're at 3.9, which is the low end of budget guidance and the rate of inflation this past year. So unless there's further amendments, Ms. Clerk needs some time to do the calculation to come back with what that will work out to be for the levy for this year. So is there, and, and if that's the case, we'll take a 15-minute recess to do that. Is there any further introductions for council to consider? Okay, seeing none, we are going to recess for 15 minutes. So we'll see you back here at 10 minutes after 7:00. Ms. Clerk, do your math. Bathroom break time?
Yes.
We'll be back here at 7:10. Thank you. Yes, and you go-
Everybody, welcome back.
Oh, I'm sorry, welcome back everyone after a recess. Our finance staff have checked the numbers and then double-checked their numbers. So I'm going to go to our Director of Finance, Ms. Clark, to present the refined numbers that council has been whittling away at. And then we'll be asking for council to vote. There are eight recommendations in the report, and I'll be going directly to that once we're ready to make our move. So go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I have put them up on the screen. So we did calculate them fast during the meeting, but I always like a recess to have the CEO and my general manager double-check my math. So what we've got there is a revision on recommendation number one. So that council received the mayor's proposed tax levy-supported budget with revenues and expenses each totaling $164,148,925 as revised. You'll notice it's just, it's a decrease of $400,000. That's because the expenses went down $400,000, but the adjustments on the revenues went up $120,000. So that's the change for recommendation one. Are you planning to vote on these as a group?
Yes, that's the plan.
No changes to recommendation two or three. Recommendation four is decreased by $520,000 based on the additional adjustments that everybody has recommended. So that council approved a 2025 tax levy increase related to operating revenues and expenditures of $3,580,031. That represents a 3.9% levy increase. Recommendation five is not changing. We are still recommending the 1% capital levy. And along with that is a recommendation to amend the capital budget as discussed, add $900,000 to the rural surface treatment program, which would increase that program almost double by, or more than double, I should say, sorry, by from $750,000 to $1.6 million. And then the last one's changing, just decreasing again by $520,000. So that council approved the 2025 net tax levy of $95,515,912. I will say then, recommendation seven below, if council satisfied, all the amendments are considered with the strong mayor powers. There's this 30-day review period. It technically started the day the mayor's proposed budget came out, not the staff one. So the staff one came out January 6th, the mayor's one came out January 15th. So we are asking if council is satisfied to reduce that review period by 24 days so that that review period ends today. And then recommendation eight, Mr. Mayor, is strictly for you. So assuming that council passes number seven, it's just that the mayor waives the veto period, essentially having it end today. And you would do that in writing to the clerk.
So, Mr. Clerk, if I could just, so for number eight, is that not part of this motion, then? Is that my separate one? How do we handle that one?
Yeah, so council would just vote on one through seven. And then if you can verbally agree to recommendation number eight, I think we will have that written correspondence for you to sign, prepared tomorrow morning.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion from council, for Councilor Strange, seconded by Councilor Baldinelli. If, yes, Councilor Patel? Yes?
Through the ruler, rural resurfacing treatment for the roads, what kind of roads are we talking about?
Mr. Nicol?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The actual roads are listed in the details on your agenda, but they're rural in nature, so they're outside of the urban area, but they're roads that are longer stretches of road. So the surface treatment is a rural application. It's about six and a half kilometers of additional roads we're able to offer for the $900,000 amendment on Crowland Road, Dell Road, Lions Creek Road, Morris Road. These are roads where speeds are often higher than 50 kilometers an hour, and any areas where there are potholes or edge drop-offs do expose us to risks for people who might damage their vehicles or drive off the road. So they're definitely recommended from a risk-communication point of view, and an additional six and a half kilometers out of our 500-kilometer network is certainly a significant increase in the ability for us to keep our roads in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further questions, we've got a motion by Councilor Strange, seconded by Councilor Baldinelli, that we approve one through seven. That was just articulated by our Director of Finance, Ms. Clark. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? We're voting on one through seven that Ms. Clark just went through on the screen. So it's on your agenda, but she updated some of the numbers based on going to 3.9%. Okay, so we're going to call the vote. All those in favor?
You can make statements after.
You can make statements after, yes, you can, yeah. We'll try one more time. I'm sorry, everybody, we're getting our exercise in. All those in favor, okay? Opposed? Okay, so we've got one opposed, Councilor LaCoco is opposed. And then how do we handle number, and then for number eight, how do I do this, Mr. Clerk, exactly?
You could just simply state that you are in favor of recommendation number eight, and we will make sure that, again, that is in writing for you to sign. And of course, these are through the mayor's powers legislation.
Okay, so council, I just want to be clear that I am in favor of number eight, and I am going to waive my opportunity to extend this and end it tonight. Yes, Councilor LaCoco?
Through the mayor, could we have our treasurer send this to us so we have it, and then that, the original one with all of the changes as well, that you put up on the slide, the new slide, the one slide that you redid? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. You wanted to make a statement, Councilor Patel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So this budget is 3.9%. That includes 1.5% of capital levy.
1%.
No, no, 1% is after, 1.5% budget, capital budget we passed, right? What was it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the existing capital levy is 1.5%, and we've added 1%. So now we will have two and a half.
So 1.5% we passed before, and that's part of the 3.9%, but plus one is separate for the road levy, because we did get the major complaint we had last year was the roads. Even on our survey, roads are the number one. And I actually had a hard time, I actually really had a really hard time voting on this budget, because as we all know, that we are heading into very uncertain times, especially, you know, what's happening in the U.S. with the tariffs, and we don't know what's going to happen in our federal government, and everything adding up. And I, again, I said that before, I again want to say before this meeting ends to all, we are all in together, us, councilors, staffs, city residents everywhere together. I want to say it again, can we please find efficiency and work proactively to get, to make sure the budget is not up again next year? Because people will be worse off next year than they are today, because people are worse off today than they were last year. Condition's not improving, so we have to look at differently. I do understand we are at the rate of inflation, so kudos to staff and kudos to all the councillors, mayor, everybody who worked around the clock. I know we all had so many meetings, we all were on the phone trying to decrease the budget, we all worked hard, and it is hard to pass the budget for everyone. It's not easy, because what we do is going to affect people's lives. But in our case, our budget is only 33%. Region increases so much, but what happens at the end of the day, as you said, we send the bill in. So people call us, people complain to us, the budget has gone so high. And every time you try to explain to them about the majority increase is from the region, they just tell us that you're passing the buck. We're not passing the buck, it is what it is. And that is why I think our staff did a great job breaking it down. But I would also like to encourage everyone, when people do call us for tax increase, you have the numbers of our regional councillors too, because they are the ones who's voting on the budget that we have to answer for. And again, we all agreed, Frank DeLuca was here, and we all agreed that region is adding to lots of the cost. And as you always say, there are too many cups in the kitchen. And that is why we actually, our residents have to bear the cost. And the way our economy's going, we can't, we can't really ever afford 13 governments in one small section. So I'm not sure if we can do it today. I don't know if a procedural bylaw, if they can waive it. I would like to make a formal motion, to send a resolution to province and look at this, because we, as a municipality, we are suffering. They put the shelter in our city, and we are bearing the cost. We have to clean it up. We have to do lots of things, the region is putting it on us. So I'm not sure today is the right day. If it's not, then maybe next time. I would like to do it today, because people are suffering, and we are bearing the cost for everything the region's putting on us. And we have to take the anger, and we have to answer all the questions for the region's increase. And every councillor here will get the questions, we all get the email. So I would like to ask province, look at the governance, do the governance review and see what's the best way to move forward, especially when it comes to efficiency. Is this the best way to move forward? I don't see it. Even if it cuts my job, cuts this council, I actually really want to, province to look into this and do, look into governance reviews and see what's the best way to move forward. So I would like to put in the motion.
Mr. Clerk, regarding notice of motion timing?
Yeah, if, as long as part of that motion also includes just waiving the procedural bylaw for notice of motion, it could be done this evening.
So you can do it tonight if you'd like to ask for waiver?
I would like to ask council, would you like, would you be able to?
We'll do it all in one. Why don't you ask for a waiver of procedural bylaw and do your notice of motion all at the same time? So do you need her to, like, did you get enough to words with that, Mr. Clerk, or what's your thoughts?
Repetition always helps me out, so.
So just ask, can we just kind of sum up with your?
Oh, yeah, I just want to ask that we actually craft a formal resolution, I think that's what it is, to ask province to look into governance review, for the best efficient way to move forward, because the way it is right now, it's not working. And our taxpayers are bearing the cost, it is not the efficient way, no matter what the decision is, but we want them to look into governance review and come up with the best option for taxpayers.
And you're looking at lowering the number of politicians and?
Lowering the number, that's number one. We have 126 politicians. We have 13 governments. We have 13 CEOs, we have 126 politicians. And look at Hamilton, they have what, 16? And look at Toronto, they have only 26. And our province of Ontario, how many do they have? 123 or 22 MPPs to run the whole province?
I don't actually know.
I think they have less than region.
Okay.
So they can run the whole province. So I want them to lower the number of politician and look at the most efficient way to run this region. Because we are running the police board with everybody sitting on the board. I'm sure we can do the same thing with our health department, lots of things could be done, because health department is under the region, but we are dealing with the homelessness, we are dealing with lots of other things. So I really want them to look at the governance review and see the best, best way to move forward for our region. And that includes reducing the number of politician, that's for sure, that's one of the main thing.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Councilor Patel, seconded by Councilor Newsteag. Did you want to speak to it, Councilor Newsteag?
Yeah, and just to continue on with what Councilor Patel said, and what I was saying earlier and Frank DeLuca, we absolutely have to stop everything and start looking and building from scratch with that review. It's, maybe we look geographically and looking skill-based and different resources that we need, so an absolute whole review of it, and maybe even look at the other cities that have moved to it. It's, and I think we have to go and say, we were the forgotten ones. You know, they got so far, and they always say they got down the highway, and then all of a sudden, they forgot about us. And as they forgot about us, you see how we just continue to get further and further behind, because our cost of living here is so, so high. A girlfriend of mine recently, and she, big sister, was in, she had gone with a realtor up to Oakville one day, and she's a, she just happened to be with her, and the realtor was saying, this is a tax base there. And my friend said, what are you talking about, the taxes? And she's like, yeah, this is what it is. And she's looking at this big grand home in Oakville paying far less, and it's because we have all these additional taxes. So although we're doing a great job keeping our taxes low in our city, but it doesn't matter, it's what the other 9.6% that's being added by the region. So when you add it all together, it's a very large tax vote for our resident, very, far greater than all the other regions as well. And I think when we're doing that motion, that maybe we should do a comparison to what does it cost our taxpayer down here to live, just based on taxes versus Oakville, for instance, or London. It's just unfair that, you know, they started it and then left us alone, and now's the time, we cannot continue, to Councilor Patel's point, times are getting harder, we just can't have this duplication. It's almost, it makes, it's senseless how we have, like I was saying earlier, a snowplow going up Lundie's Lane and then Main Street, the regional, and they're crossing, and it's totally, totally inefficient. Even Eric Nicol, when he's talking about his response, rapid response group, we've got the region doing it, then we come in, but it's all, everything's just double-layered and completely mixed up. So I absolutely support and second it, and I think the sooner we can get it to the province saying, how fast can we do this, so we're not here next year and the following years to do it. So we need to have a complete overhaul on this whole, on our whole governance model down here. If it means that we don't have a job, so be it. I'd rather have an efficient city than having, be, having us all here. So anyway.
Thank you, thank you for that. Councilor Dubrowski?
Through you to Councilor Newsteag and Councilor Patel. Just to clarify, sorry, when we're talking about reducing government, we're talking about reducing the region and potentially amalgamating with another municipality. And the reason I ask that is because we're talking so heavily about the OLG funds, and we're implementing it in MAT tax, my question would be, what would happen with that? So I'm not voting for or against that this time, but I am throwing that question out to both of you, just to get a response and get your insight.
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, my vision would be, depending on how they structured this whole region, so the money would still come in, but maybe this, maybe we're going to a four-city approach or a five-city approach, and that, those monies would go into this area. Other people have different assets in their geographical area as well. But maybe if you're looking, just off of my head, you've got Niagara Lake, if that became part of Niagara Falls, that's a tourist area as well, so even more tourist dollars assisting everybody in that area. Again, it would have to have in-depth study, and it's not something that should be taken lightly, you have to have in-depth study. How do we do policing and proper policing through it all? And fire, how do we do that through it all? Do we need the 12 different fire departments? Do we, and we have one police, but is one police sufficient enough, or is that too large? It really requires an in-depth study of all best practices. We are very unique down here, our, geographically, we're spread out, so we've got a lot of factors that other municipalities don't have. So it will require a lot of study.
Thank you for that. Are you done, Count? Yep.
To be honest, my motion was just, to Councilor Dubrowski, just to look at the governance review, to see what the best practices would be. I'm not suggesting one way or another, it's just a governance review. And just one more question for you, Mr. Mayor. We had a public meeting over the governance review, have you heard anything back from that?
No, they were supposed to have follow-up meetings, and there hasn't been one yet, so I don't know when that is, but that was, was that last summer? Yeah, that we had it in St. Catherine's, yeah. So there were supposed to be follow-up ones, and I don't know where that's at right now. It's a good question. I've got Councilor LaCoco?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we had, they called them hearings, I thought that they were going to produce documentation to say, well, if we did this, then it would be this, it would cost this. I thought we were going to see more. Basically, what I saw was the mayor's, other economic development people speaking at the hearing, whether they were for or against a model. Then another hearing was supposed to be done, and I think that was in January, and then there was another one supposed to come in May, and that hasn't happened. So to me, that whole hearing thing was of no value, because there was no information given to anybody to make a decision. So I would support a motion to review and come back to us, and not just, you know, get some information and then make a decision without giving us, like, is it a three-city model, is it a four-city model, is it a one, one region, one big city, is it a supercity? I've heard that the OLG money would go to that whole municipality, whether it was three or four cities. So there's a lot of information out there, and this has been going on for 20, 30 years. So I would support that motion as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dubrowski?
And I'll support the motion as well. I just wish we would have had a little more time to maybe have a discussion.
Is this a reasonable motion? We have more than?
And I can appreciate that, but either way, and I look back at the budget, and this is me keeping my Niagara, City of Niagara Falls hat on, I don't want to share the funds with another municipality. We've all said it around this horseshoe many times, and we've said it tonight, we're a very unique municipality, we're a tourism-driven economy, and I can appreciate that we're going to get, look at getting some information back, but I would just be mindful that we are, we are unique out of the 12 municipalities in the Niagara region. There's not many that are, there's none that are like us. And to that point too, and to just go off topic a little bit, in future budgets, if we're not counting on that OLG funding, then maybe we shouldn't be including the MAT tax in future budgets as well. But either way, happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Yep, just, yep, it's just a notice, it's only a notice of motion. So there's nothing to vote on, is there? Or no, we have to wait, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, that's right, you're right, I'm sorry. Easy, oh, wow, everyone's a little edgy. Sorry, Mr. Clerk would like to speak?
So yes, we still need to call the vote, but just to be clear, because I'm hearing some rumblings on both sides of the room here, this is just to have it be put on the next council agenda as a motion, and then it'll get, it'll get voted on at that point. That's from what I'm hearing.
What's that? Oh, there's, there's another, Mr. Clerk, it was suggested, why don't we just pass it, if we're bypassing procedural bylaw, can we just pass that tonight, so?
Yes, we could, I'm here to entertain council's wishes.
He's here to entertain. You know?
I thought you mentioned that first, just do it all in one.
Oh, I see, okay.
We're waiving the procedural bylaw, and then in this case, for not only notice of motion, but approve the motion.
Well, I have a second round, yeah, okay.
That's your final counsel statement.
Well, I think we already heard from everybody. It looks like you have support for your motion, Counselor. Yeah, okay, so, move, seconded, asking the province to look at the governance review for the Niagara region, and to look at the options to reduce the number of politicians and save us money. Okay, we'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you for that. And, Mr. Clerk, I understand there's one more piece of business that we need to deal with tonight?
Well, there's still a couple more things here on the communications and comments of the city. of the city clerk. We've got a couple of items there, 6.1 and 6.2, and then I do have one third additional item.
Okay, 6.1, memo to Chair and members of the Library Board, 2025 capital budget. There's a recommendation.
I'll move 6.1 and 6.2.
Okay, motion by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Strange, that we move 6.1 and 6.2, which is the Niagara Falls innovation hub. Correspondence is attached. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that. Mr. Clerk?
And then the one additional item that I'd like council to consider is that, first of all, council waived the procedural bylaw to allow for an additional motion, and that that motion be that council grant a leave of absence for Councilor Wayne Campbell for medical reasons.
Motion by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Strange, that we give, give way to the procedural bylaw so we can extend the?
He's home now.
And, yeah, Councilor Peter Angelo, did you want to share that? That Councilor Campbell is now back home again. So he was home, he was in the hospital, he was home, he's been back and forth, but he is back home again, for anyone that wants to spend some time with him. Okay, we'll call that vote. All those in favor, and that's unanimous, Mr. Clerk, thank you for that. And we also have ratificat, yes, Councilor LaCoco?
I just had a couple of comments from, on the budget. It was mentioned earlier today about the region putting the shelter there, and we didn't have any say. We contributed that facility to the region, so we did know it was going to go there. I don't think we knew what was going to happen, but we were aware of that. I just wanted to clarify that. And I just wanted to put it on the record that I didn't vote for the budget because I wanted to sustain or reduce. And I also encourage council throughout the year, not just at budget time, but come up with ideas about how we can reduce, enhance services, come up with more revenue, and let's have fruitful, in-depth discussions throughout the year, so when it comes budget time, maybe we can implement them instead of doing it now. It's very difficult to do it now.
Yeah, and like we say, every day is budget day. So we should always be looking in discriminating eyes, and there's two ways, you either cut expenses or you increase revenues, top line or bottom line. So, and you never cut your way to prosperity. You have to, revenue should be the driving factor, and we've got a lot of opportunities because we're in Niagara Falls, right? We've got a lot of good opportunities here in this city. So we are now looking, Mr. Clerk, for ratification of in-camera?
Yes, thank you, worship. As explained earlier, there's nothing to ratify. Council just met for an education session, so nothing there. And last thing on your agenda before adjournment is just the one, one confirmation bylaw to be passed.
Motion by Councilor Peter Angelo. Oh yes, of course, we'd love that.
Thanks, your worship. I did want to say something that council dealt with last week, and it was about, yeah.
So this is before the bylaw?
So the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But before I do, actually, worship, I missed last meeting because I was at the World University Games. But what I wanted to mention, what I wanted to mention was that we have another young gentleman that's there right now, who's still playing. So our deputy fire chief, Ken Henry, his son Curtis is in the gold medal game for ice hockey, for men's ice hockey, and it's going to be tomorrow. So they just won the semifinals tonight, so they move on to the gold medal game, and that's going to be tomorrow. So anyone, anyone that has Ken Henry's email, you know, send him a little message and let him know that we're all wishing his son Curtis and Team Canada the best, and bring home the gold.
Which age group this is?
That would be great. This is the university students, so they're all university students. I think he's out in PEI, if I'm not mistaken.
Wow, amazing, so we'll do that for sure?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. The one thing I did want to address though is, at last week's meeting, council voted to sell the Chippewa Community Center that we had there, or, sorry, the Chippewa Town Hall. And what I wanted to ask was whether or not it would be possible to do a targeted sale, somewhat like what we do with our industrial lands. Like, you know, if you go back to 15 years ago, someone could come along and offer us a certain amount, and then they would be the owners of 10 acres of industrial land. But that's why you see a lot of signs up again now, that the properties are for sale. And we do it a lot differently now. We bring the people in, we try to understand, you know, what their use is going to be on the industrial lands, and then we actually sign an agreement with them. There's some deadlines for them to hit, and if they don't hit those deadlines, then we can take the property back. I really think it would be worthwhile to do something like that with the old Chippewa Town Hall. You know, if we did a targeted approach to selling it, I would really just hate to sell it to the, to the top bidder, and then we have no idea what that person is going to do with it. They could sit on it for a number of years, they could flip it, they could do all kinds of things. I think it'd be nice to actually, I don't know if it would be done through an RFP, or if it would just be, you know, part of, part of our sale process, but to try to understand, you know, the buyer that we're working with, and to have an agreement in place with that person, so that we know what's going to happen there.
Okay.
I don't know if you need a motion. If you do, I'm happy to make one. If it's direction of staff, I'm happy with that as well.
So why don't we go to our CEO first, and then we'll see what direction he's suggesting? Mr. CEO?
Thank you. I don't think direction of staff is required. The deal will come back to council. We will put our standard, since I've been here, we have some standard no-flip, no-speculation clauses in our transactions, and a right to buy back. We will request, the property will go out for sale through a real estate agent. Offers will come in, there is an ask that they provide us a brief summary of what is the plan for the property. And then the, and there is no requirement for us to accept the highest bid. So council will have knowledge of what the, what is the proposed bid, and we will put timelines in for them to execute or have the right to purchase it back from them. So staff are already working with that going forward. Same with the other two properties that, that are up for sale will be part of a package.
Good, okay, thank you very much.
Bylaws?
Bylaws.
Second and third.
Motion by Councilor Peter Angelo to give the bylaws a first, second, and third reading, seconded by Councilor Strange. We'll call the vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's approved. And is there anything else, Mr. Clerk?
Adjournment.
Okay, motion for adjournment, Councilor Strange, seconded by Councilor Newstagg, all those in favor. Okay, we are adjourned, unanimously adjourned. Everyone agreed on that one, Mr. Clerk?